Harbor City Council meeting on Monday, July 26, 2021. The time is, I don't know, is 5:45 if it's right. And we have a packed house. We haven't had a house for almost 18 months, so.
Your Honor, that clock is wrong. It's 5:33.
Okay, I was gonna say, you know. So it's a new norm. This is a new chapter, so welcome. With that, tonight's city council meeting is also being broadcast live on Zoom. If you are attending the meeting on Zoom, you can give comment during the public comment portions of the meeting by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window or by pressing star nine on your phone. Now, please wait to be called when it is your time. Public comment on items not on the agenda will be separate from each comment portion that is at each council bill. Public comment is not a Q and A, but a time for the public to make a statement. And with that, I'd like to do a roll call from my far left.
Robin Denson, City Council.
Lee Rodenberg, City Council.
Jenny Wilk, City Council.
Bob Heim, City Council.
Kikun, Mayor.
Jim Franch, Council.
Spencer Aberstall, Council.
Tracy Merrickley, Council.
Thank you. And with that, please join us for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, nice to do that together. All sorts of new, new normal things. With that, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes, seven zero on the consent. We do have our buttons, as everyone remembers, on our lower side. And with that, we will move to our presentation tonight is Gig Harbor Peninsula Fish Food Bank. Welcome. Please come forward.
Now, is there protocol on how I begin? Do I give my name or do I just? Never done this before.
State your name and fish. And actually, let's see, there is no way of. No, I guess there's no way of showing you. Every once in a while, look back at that. You're not on the camera, even if you look back. Okay, we're hearing you.
Fine.
Thank you.
My name's Amy Gartland. I'm Capitol Campaign co-chair and serve as fundraising coordinator for Gig Harbor Peninsula Fish. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you all today. I'll be speaking about how things are going at Fish today. And then Jeanie Ratcliffe-Gagliano will talk about the building and the facility that is, we've broken ground for. Thank you for the city of Gig Harbor and the multitude of supporters in the community. And thankful for y'all, we have now broken ground. On screen, we'll end up, you'll see some photos of our current facility, and that will provide you some visuals of why we need a larger facility. One photo in it, it's one where it's, oh, yep, over on the far left. See the chair? That kind of gives you an idea of when folks were coming in during COVID, they couldn't come in and wait because we had the restrictions and we had to be far apart. And so a lot of the folks actually had to wait outside. So that's gotten off track, and I knew I'd do that. So as, so you can see, we also have our loading dock. And then in the middle is a picture of, that's probably food for about a family of three. So that gives you an idea of what we're able to provide. Gig Harbor Peninsula Fish would like to thank you and the city of Gig Harbor and the community as a whole for its support through 45 years of serving. It's the community that supports our neighbors in need, and it's through the Gig Harbor Peninsula Fish Organization that that aid is distributed. And just today, Officer Busi gave us some gift cards that apparently they have received and aren't supposed to receive. I hope I'm not in my, okay. And just literally walked over and handed us a bag of gift cards that we'll be able to provide. I know through the council, just looking, Bob Heim's, I met your wife at the thrift store. She's buying clothes, children's clothes to donate. Rob, and I've been able to work with Robyn and Lee's wife. I love Jeanie, you know. So it is truly, and I'm sure you all, raise your hand if you've helped with Fish, done anything. I mean, this is truly a community project. And up until, gosh, February, we were all volunteer. We have one now part-time employee. There are over 200 volunteers who help distribute food and financial aid weekly. And they do it, they love it. They love doing it. If you, when you're there, you'll notice it's actually a place of joy. As most folks know, Gig Harbor Peninsula Fish has a food bank. And I say we have a food bank because we are much more than a food bank. A lot of folks say we're the food bank. Well, we have a food bank. During recent years, on average, we serve 10,000 individuals annually. This includes families, children, elderly, disabled folks. Even during COVID, the number of clients seeking assistance was just about over 10,000. But we saw different folks coming in. A lot of our clients were elderly and disabled. They weren't comfortable coming in at the very beginning. In fact, we had to make calls. Well, didn't have to, but we wanted to make calls to make sure everybody was doing okay and let them know that if they needed the assistance, we had delivery service. We had to make some changes during COVID, and that was one of them. Let's see, another area in which Gig Harbor Peninsula Fish makes an impact is with financial assistance. And that's probably been the biggest impact that's been made during COVID. I went back and I wanted to see what the average was for folks, helping folks with financial aid before COVID. And we averaged about 500 families. We help with financial aid. That's just financial aid. This past year, the numbers just have been staggering. For March 2021, between March 2020 and March 2021, we have provided over $545,000 in rental and utility assistance. And that was with just under 10,000 clients. 9,996 clients, and those are families, were assisted. Now, although, and just to give you a comparison from years prior, January of 2020, we provided $16,000 worth of assistance. In January of 2021, $79,000 worth of rental assistance. Now, in the recent months, it has come down a little bit, but we have seen an uptick here recently. In April, we provided 37,000. May, 48,000. June, 58,000. And as the moratorium comes into, after it goes away in September 30, it'll be interesting to see what type of assistance we're able to provide. And this assistance doesn't just help our clients. It also helps those, the landlords. We've gotten a lot of thank yous from landlords for being able to provide them with that assistance because they also, in turn, have to pay their rental or mortgage. Other ways that Gig Harbor Peninsula Fish provides help is through a clothing program. We help with a student aid program. And this is where we help grade school students with supplies and counseling services. And we also are able to provide trade school and college students with things such as help with fees, supplies, transportation. So helping folks with get back on their feet. Some other areas that we help with is holiday assistance during Thanksgiving and Christmas. And boy, you should see what's accomplished during the Christmas toy drive. It's just, we had a warehouse just full, full of toys and gifts for the family. We also have little things. We do little things like birthday bags. You know, we have kids, the parents come in and we have a birthday closet. They can choose toys and a bag that has cake mix, balloons, all that fun stuff. So basically, the food bank again is way more than a food bank. And I said, we have a food bank, and now I'm calling it a food bank. So COVID, during COVID, we lost a lot of volunteers. And so we had to reach out to the community, and they stepped up. It was amazing that we really did not miss a beat, even with the new folks coming in. They were very helpful. You know, COVID's impact has really shown the importance of Fish and the importance of having a new facility for Fish that is flexible enough to meet the changing needs of the community. A respectful and dignified place to receive help when life throws you a curveball. And that's what we're, we really are doing is we're just helping the public. We're helping the community. And actually, it's the, there they are. I have to say, I'm going off, I'm sorry. One thing that before COVID that we're able to do, and it does give respect and dignity to our clients, is they were able to shop for their family. They got to choose the items that were beneficial to their family alone. Now, what we're having to do is we are giving out bags of groceries, but they still do have some options that they can choose from because of the grocery stores and all the produce and items that we get from the stores. But we're looking forward to having a larger facility that's open. Another thing that'll be nice is today, it was quite warm. Jan was working. She says it's like 90 degrees in there. So one of the things we don't have is good ventilation. If you've been there, you'll know it's, I think they call it a rabbit hole. You go in, and there's all different ways to get everywhere and not the best necessarily circulation. At this time, we'd like to introduce Jeanie Ratcliffe-Gagliano, and she's going to talk about the facility. And I appreciate you allowing us to speak, and I hope was able to provide some information, more of what the impact has been in the recent years. Thank you.
Hello. Hi. Thank you, Mayor Coon and City Council members for your steadfast support of the Gig Harbor Peninsula Fish Food Bank and their efforts to find a permanent home that meets the needs of the community. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Jean Ratcliffe-Gagliano, and my architecture firm has been working with Ron and Jen Cohen and the Fish Food Organization on the building plans for their new building. The ideas behind this new building project have been in the works for over 10 years. With the input of many individuals, the programming for the building was well-defined by volunteer representatives from the building committee. They did their homework, spent many hours touring other food bank facilities throughout the Puget Sound area. They prepared programming documents, Excel spreadsheets, diagrams, with the goal in mind to meet the growing demands for helping a neighbor in trouble with dignity. Looking toward the future, the proposed 10,250-square-foot building will consolidate all the functions of the food bank, which are currently spread out over several off-site locations into one central location. There will be a 1,500-square-foot admin wing with four separate office spaces, a conference room, a client's reception and waiting area that will allow clients to have private conversations about their circumstances. The remaining 8,500-square-foot warehouse and lobby area will have 15-foot-high ceilings, exposed trusses, and lots of light. It's been designed with a flexible, open floor plan with room to organize, sort, display food, and non-food items for orderly distribution. There will be a designated area for both a walk-in freezer and cooler so that more perishables will be able to be accepted, stored, and distributed to the clients. The volunteer spaces are centrally located to improve daily functions and efficiency. Most importantly, the building has a flexible floor plan with a lot, without a lot of walls to accommodate future growth, unforeseen crisis situations, and the changing needs of the community over time. As part of the Washington State process, that's the Washington State grant process, the building will meet criteria for United States Green Building Council LEED Silver's designation, which stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. The requirements to meet this standard will significantly improve energy efficiency and will decrease the operating expenses of the building. Over the past year and a half, my architecture firm, RGA, has had the pleasure of working with an exceptional team of consultants, including A H B L Civil and Structural Engineers, Bradley Design Group Landscape Architects, Traffic Consultants, Wetland Consultants, Arborists, and Soils Engineers, to name a few. We have been working closely with Washington Patriot Construction Team, who has helped to facilitate coordination with electrical and mechanical subcontractors and building cost estimators. The result is a simple, yet beautiful, cost-effective, secure, flexible, and efficient building design solution. Initially, plans were submitted to the city of Gig Harbor for land use applications in June 2020, just over a year ago. Part of the process included three public meetings before the city's design review board for their recommendation of approval. The site, the major site plan review was approved, and CIPA Determination of Non-Significance was released on July 9, 2021, and the clearing grading permit was issued last week. So we are very excited. We had a joyful groundbreaking ceremony that many of you attended, which was on, at the site on June 29. By continuing to work vigorously with city staff, we expect to receive civil, storm, water, and building construction permits in the next few weeks. Our hope is that the building will be ready for occupancy by summer or fall of next year in 2022. We would like to give special thanks, in particular, to the city's Community Development Department, Planning and Building Divisions, and Public Works Department for their professionalism and help in shepherding this project through the complex building permit application and review process. We would also like to thank all of the city of Gig Harbor staff, the mayor, and city council members for partnering with the Fish Food Bank to make this building become a reality for the benefit of the community to be enjoyed for many years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the city, we all really do appreciate all the hard work that Fish has done, all the volunteers. And, you know, this fall, I will be asking council to support my request for a one-time funding of several hundred thousand for our 2022 budget for Fish. So we'll be putting that in the budget before council, and then it'll be hard, I think, to have council say no. But, and we're also looking into the different funds that we're going to be getting from our federal money and actually to see if some of those funds could actually come from there. So we will be working on that for you. Thank you. The mayor's report. I had really wanted to do a public outreach for the Masonic Temple, and there's just a lot of things that we're not going to get done before the end of the year. So I'm just letting council know and the public know that as much as we wanted to do a public outreach for, you know, determining what we're going to be doing with Masonic Temple, it's not possible. It would be putting the cart before the horse. There's other things that we have to finish up first. So that'll be something that council will be taking on in 2022. And obviously, there'll be money in the budget to work on that. So also, we had $10,000, which we've done several times each year for trees. A lot of times when we want to spend $10,000 for trees, you have to design it, you have to plan it. Same thing, we don't have a lot of time to do that, but we still want to spend that money. So we'll be, I've already talked to our Public Works Department. We're going to kind of spread $10,000 in trees in three different spots. We're going to spend about $3,300 between the, actually at Crescent Creek Park to give a little buffer to the farmer, the person to the north that has a ranch right there, wants a little buffer between us and them, and that's unincorporated area. So that's the part that we haven't determined what we're going to do yet, but we're going to give Steve, a little buffer between Steve Paris and the city of Gig Harbor. So we've already talked to him. He's been requesting that for several years. And we don't have to do a lot of landscaping plans to make that happen. And so we're going to work on that. We're also going to plant some trees and/or some shrubs in Soundview Forest. And Veterans too. You know, we don't want to spend all the money downtown. We're going to be looking at Veterans Park. There's places where you park right at Veterans. They like to joyride all over the field with their cars and trash the field. And we've got barricades there right now, but it would be a lot more attractive to have shrubs and trees than concrete barriers. And hopefully, there's a little bit left for Grandview Forest or the skate park. But we're going to spread that 10,000 this fall and then keep an eye on it next winter. And there is a hose 100 feet away on Crescent Creek, so we can still water those things next spring. So I wanted to provide that for council. City Administrator's Report. Tony, you actually haven't, I do want to say you haven't actually been able to, I haven't been able to ask you ever, I think, for maybe in January of 2020, was it? Yeah, I guess it was.
Well, I don't have much of a report, other than to say, I want to say thank you to council and staff and community for the warm welcome I've been given for my return to Gig Harbor. It was very nice to reconnect with those council members that I worked with when I was here three years ago. Very nice to meet the new members of the council. Looking forward to working with you. And I'm very lucky that I know all of your department directors, with the exception of Laura, who I've gotten to meet. I'm just very excited to be able to be here and help you all out and looking forward to, looking forward to keeping things moving forward. So thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have a staff report. We have Austin Park Honorary Project. The report is from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langhill.
And this is the, oh, good, nevermind. I was going to say this is the high-tech part of the meeting. I was going to turn the camera around, but I forgot. He's going to use the camera on his laptop, so.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Okay, Josh, you have a few slides. You want me to bring that up? Okay, great. So tonight, I'm just providing council with a quick summary of the status of the honoring art project that I provided a little bit of a follow-up from last council meeting earlier in July. I wanted to start by showing a few of the renderings from the artist, Guy Kapoman, from when he first submitted on his art project. So this is it here. So these sketches have been provided to the city by the artist, Guy Kapoman. You can see that it's a Native American with canoes on both sides. The, it's kind of hard to see in this image, but the height of this artwork is about 15 feet high from the base to the top. It's about four foot diameter. And we have, and it is quite colorful. We have this art piece currently being stored with the city and ready to go. Would you mind advancing? Oh, there's only. Okay, thank you. So I wanted to go now next through a quick summary of the project schedule. The task that we've recently completed is transporting the artwork from the artist's shop to the city's facility. We did that back in April. And then in this past winter and spring, Community Development Department has been able to complete the Shoreline Master Program Amendment well ahead of schedule. They had that before council and approved by council at the June 14 meeting. So that was a great success to get that over and through. We are now on to the next process, which we submitted our land use application submittal for the actual art placement based on that approved Shoreline Master Program Amendment. That was completed on June 30. That is now with the Planning Division for Review. And Planning and Community Development are working closely together to have this project before the hearing examiner in August. It's going to be a very tight timeline, and that's something, though, that we feel we can, we can do as long as we meet all of our deadlines. Tonight, on the city's consented, council's consent agenda was authorization to have a structural design amendment approved, and that was approved by the consent agenda. So that's now going to be moving forward. That structural design would support the city in designing and permitting the art base. So the artwork, 15-foot-tall, four-foot-diameter wood, has to sit on concrete base. And if you at all know the history of this site, you know that it's full of sodas, it's full of mud from all sorts of places, sediment. It's not what I would at all call stable soil. So we have to put a pretty stout structural base to hold that artwork up. So that's going to be completed now, starting in August. And then that's going to bring me into the future tasks that we're going to be, that I'm going to be covering here. So we're going to have permitting that's going to be completed for the building permit application process. All of those applications are going to be submitted in September based on the work that Peterson Structural Engineers will be able to write us. After we submit on our building permit, we will then begin advertising for a small public works contractor to do the work that was designed by Peterson Structural Engineers. And so we hope to get that small public works contract out for advertisement, hopefully by the end of September. That will put us on track to begin award a contract, hopefully an authorized construction at the end of October, which is about the, mid-October is when we hope to receive all approvals for the land use permit process. So we're synchronizing all these in the timeframe that allows us to have construction underway in October and hopefully completed in November. So that's where we are up on screen now is the site plan of the project. Item one on the screen in a box is the actual artwork itself. There's a bench that's nearby, numbered three, in two different locations. And then item two listed is the gravel path that is going from the existing pathway to be able to allow people to walk around the artwork. So that's where we are today. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Councilmember Woo.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I found it very educational, so thanks for all the dates on there. So we know that in October, hopefully, that we will be awarding the contract for the base. Is that correct? And how long do you expect that to take?
Well, it depends on timing. From the time the contract is awarded, it may not go to council for award, depending on our purchasing policy. If it falls within certain thresholds, the city administrator can authorize that contract. So, but once the contract is authorized, we have to do our standard contracting procedures. That takes a couple weeks. And then we have to review submittals by the contractor. And then once the submittals are reviewed, then we can grant authorization to proceed. So depending on how often or how long that takes, it could be anywhere from three to six weeks before, from the time the contract's awarded to the time the contractor's out there constructing.
And so from finished construction to setting the sculpture on the base, do you have any time for that?
My, I don't. I'll be needing some information from the contractor that we select. Just based on some typical information for curing of concrete, it's unlikely that the contractor or that we could set the artwork on the base until at least 14 days after the concrete is fully cured or the concrete's been placed.
Right, and that's a rainy season sometimes as well, right? Does that have any effect on that?
And it wouldn't in this case necessarily because we can have, it's such a small piece of concrete, we can easily cover it to keep the rain off of it.
So we're still looking at placement, hopefully this fall?
Yeah, hopefully, the goal is to have it placed in November.
Okay, great.
And the artwork placed in November.
Great, Jeff, thank you so much.
Welcome. And we're hoping to kick this off with other educational signage that council has passed. We've already ordered the sign that will say Austin Park at Tuolica area, at Tuolica Estuary. That's already been ordered. We're working on a sign box right now that will actually talk about, it will have four buttons. So right when you go into that park, there will be actually a solar-powered sign, a box there that you actually can push four different buttons. And the Native Americans will actually be saying how to pronounce Squabash and Tuolica in their own native tongue. And so that is almost in the process of being ordered as well right now. And so we're doing all that at the same time. So. Councilmember Aberstall.
Yeah, Jeff, or Dr. Langham, I'm sorry. What steps are we taking in precaution to protect wildlife and some of the birds and ducks that are going to be down there when we put down the concrete so that they don't get into it? And a week goes by and we have a duck concreted to the ground?
Well, typically, the contractor, especially in the rainy season, I mean, the contractor is usually going to, usually is able to or has to be there and forming the concrete long enough to where it sets. I mean, it's pretty hard before the contractor can walk away from it. And so the worst-case scenario of a duck or a bird landed on it is there'd be some footprints on it. But it's likely that the contractor will be there long enough so that even that wouldn't happen.
I hear they're better using the crosswalk this weekend. I guess they all went across our brand-new crosswalk. Yeah, there's a video of it. They all went exactly across the crosswalk that we just installed. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much. And then we have our second staff report is our lodging tax grant policy, Tourism and Communication Director Laura Padet. And we, she should be up there. In the cloud of Zoom. Laura, up there? She was earlier.
Can you hear me? Josh, I'm in need of.
I believe councilmember Dinsen had mentioned last year that by June twenty first of two thousand twenty-one. You wanted to know that the policies that we had talked about for the grants could still apply the same. And we're a little bit behind, but we're only a couple of months behind. But Laura has a report of that.
Thank you for remembering that. All right. I'm wondering if anyone can hear me.
Laura, are you able to turn on your camera? I see your audio is on, but it doesn't look like we're getting any audio.
Can you hear me?
And we're not getting any audio from Daniel either.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see.
Of course, this ran.
I'm not sure if anyone can hear me.
We're testing it all out.
Laura, can you hear me?
Yeah.
They can't hear either of us.
Oh, that's really weird.
Yeah, it's the connection between our speakers and the computer that is not working. I'm going to see if I can pick it up over my microphone. Laura, can we hear you now? See if you can.
Hello, hello. Hello, hello.
Okay, Laura, I'm picking you up on my computer, so I'm going to try to put you over my microphone and see if that works for the chambers. Are you able to turn on your camera?
I. No, it says you cannot start your video because the host stopped it.
Let me see if I can turn that back on.
Can you hear me? There we go. Hey, look at that. Good evening, everyone.
Is that coming in any better?
Hi. Anyone? Anybody? Nope.
I can still hear you. This is Daniel.
Yeah, we can, we can just barely pick you up, Laura. Sorry.
One thing, I know, I know her report because I was at that meeting. So does she have a graph that she's going to be putting up?
He does have a PowerPoint. Yeah. If we could maybe do the next presentation and then come back to this, I think I can troubleshoot it and figure out what's wrong with her audio.
Okay. And then if not, she can be there and show the graph and I can give the report for her.
So Laura, go ahead and stop sharing your screen and we'll go on to the next staff report.
Okay, and we'll go to second quarter budget update. Our city administrator, Tony Pasecki, and our finance director, Dave Rodenbach.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have a presentation. We provided the report in written form to council in your packet. And Dave and I need to answer any questions you might have. And then that's our report.
Councilmember Woo.
Yes, thank you. I have a. Fifty-nine. I'll, I'll give everybody a little bit of a chance to get there. Forty-three of fifty-nine. Item number twelve. The Apprentice Avenue, Fenmore Street, half width frontage improvements. So this is in the budget for fifty thousand dollars and it is to have a conceptual design. Associated with the cost estimate for half front, frontage improvements between Harbor Ridge Middle School and Peacock Hill Avenue. At working for a possible grant in two thousand twenty-two. And it shows that this is on track for. To be met. This project's on track to be met in two thousand twenty-one and will come in under budget. And the percent complete as of six thirty is zero complete. So. It says we will have an on-call consultant perform design work in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. Is that scheduled for, still scheduled for this fall, Jeff?
Yes, yes, it is.
Sorry, no. City administrator, sorry.
Yes, it is still scheduled for this fall. We are hoping to use the on-call engineering consultant that completed the design of the Borgan Boulevard. Crosswalk improvements to, once they're through with that project, transition them into the conceptual design and permitting for this project, Apprentice Avenue Fenmore.
Great. Is it going to take a long time? I shouldn't take a long time to do this.
We're not going to actually submit permit applications. It's just conceptual. So we can put together a cost estimate and some preliminary design. So it shouldn't take but just a few months to complete.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
That's all we would need to do a grant application as well, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And so if that goes forward, that would be next year, I think, for the grant application, right? Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you.
Need another council comments? Okay, thank you very much. It looked like we might have got Laura back.
I think we have Laura back online. If she can unmute herself, we should be able to hear her now.
Unmuted and I'm going to try to start video. Can you hear me?
Very, very well. Maybe a little.
Wonderful. All right. I'm going to screen share and we're going to discuss just a little bit about the LTAC grant format. We're going to go into. From beginning. Okay, does everyone see my, my screen here? Anybody?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. So this time last year, we went through a proposal on how to change our LTAC grants just a little bit from two thousand nineteen's proposal. In years past, we'd given, we'd underspent in what we should have been allocating to external grants. So we're going to take you through just a little bit of this proposal on how twenty-two, twenty-two is going to look like. In addition, we, we were able to get feedback and a recommendation from our LTAC committee and, and we'll walk through that quickly here. As you know, there are four categories that we can spend under the legal guidelines for LTAC funds. Three are administered by the city. And that's tourism marketing, tourism-related capital projects and structures owned by a municipality, and then destination marketing organization functions. Only one category is awarded to an external source, which has two parts, and that's marketing and operations of special events and festivals designed to attract tourists. An operation of tourism-related facilities owned and operated by nonprofit organizations, the resulting increases in the number of people traveling for business or pleasure on a trip that includes staying overnight and paid accommodation. So we funded a good amount of things from the city side in that those three categories, what we're concerned about is the amount that we were spending, spending in the. External grant category and how to standardize that a little bit. So we're looking at long-term sustainability for the fund, of course, and what the primary goal of those funds are, which is to increase tourism and have an end. Goal of essentially increasing both lodging tax revenues and then sales tax revenues as well. So we want to retain the existing draw to the events that bring people to town, but also encourage innovation. We looked at a couple of the problems that the fund was facing, including excessive grant requests, nonprofit funding that are available through other city mechanisms to make sure that we weren't just. Overfunding some projects and not funding others. We've looked at how we measure return on investments, volatility in those requests and concentrated fund. Disbursement to the same projects and how that may lead to stagnation. We also saw that we only spent seventy-five thousand dollars. In two thousand twenty. In two thousand nineteen. We only spent twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine was awarded. So that was a real inequity in the way we were spending those funds. We also had a freeze in two thousand nineteen as we reviewed the tourism department's overall goals and vision. So. We, we overpaused a little bit on that, but there is still a marked improvement that we want to see in this percentage of funds spent per category. And. Last year, we went over this slightly. I believe you guys were, were all aware. It looks like we spend half of the amount on administrative costs, but that's only because we were massively underspending in the other categories. So the closest thing that kind of came to that was tourism marketing at thirty-nine percent. But we took a real look at how those funds were being applied and if we were getting the best value for our money there. For two thousand twenty-two, our budget projection looks at how we're moving forward and how we're going to apply those funds. And what we've projected and tried out this past year. Was essentially giving a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which is a hundred thousand dollar increase over what we gave in two thousand nineteen. We, we allocated all of that this year with a. With a. Reminding amount of five thousand dollars. So what we'd like to do is tie the percentage of funds in each category to the total budget amount. So that means if we are spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on. Tourism marketing, then we're also spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on external grants. And we want that to really, really equally apply. As to what we, we put forward in those funds so that we have this fund working for us in the four ways that it's intended. That also means that, that there is some concern about what the funds reserve looks like. And while that's just really smart governance and smart financial management, being good stories of public funds. It also means that we take that allocation of capital projects that doesn't necessarily have to be spent every year. If we find something that we want to fund for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we could do that every other year. As a budget allocation from two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, for example. That really takes us into a standardization of the spend in the external grant category, which is tied to the budget rather than tied to the fund balance, which we think is a more fluid and. Easier way to make these funds work for us in the way they're intended. So we've, we got your, your approval and we went ahead with a hundred and twenty-five last year. We did see a great amount of new applications. We, we went really hard with our marketing campaign on. How these funds can be used and encouraging new applications. And we were really encouraged to see new people applying for the funds. There is some opportunity to better communicate on. What the parameters are and we intend to operate as a kind of a sherpa for our applicants as to what is covered and what we cannot approve underneath these, this spend. In the coming year, but we also have kept on in our diversity and funding initiative, which is. Setting a cap of twenty thousand dollars per project. So that ensures that we don't fund just one project, that we fund at least, but. Five to six projects. There's no minimum for requests, so that doesn't tie us to just five to six projects. We can fund more. We also set aside five thousand dollars, the funding amount to be applied to emerging nonprofit or events or facilities. And we want to continue that. I think encouraging that development is important. We also want to make sure that we regenerate the fund. So the purpose of this fund is to make sure that we grow our lodging tax amounts and grow our sales tax amounts. So we want to make sure that this is a regenerating fund and we're accomplishing what we set out to do. We also want to make sure that we are, we have some continuity in a competitive market, especially now that people are starting to travel again. We have a lot of competition. And we need to make sure we're out there in the right ways and attracting the right audience. We did get the LTAC. We do have their support. We had a forum confirm, confirm that these, their support for these spending guidelines. As a percentage tied to the budget amount, but not the fund balance. We are also in support of the standardization, support for marketing and the other three pillars. As well as that evenly adjusted amount with twenty-five percent per category. And that's it for, for that. I invite your questions.
Councilmember Fannett.
Yeah, could you, Josh, go back to, I think, maybe the second slide?
That would be me. I'll, I'll take you back to the second slide. We're going to. Okay, that was the second slide.
Okay, one more, please. One more. So the. I have some questions about the fuel dock.
Sure. And that's a carryover really from, from last year. So, and that would fall under capital projects, but absolutely. It's a little bit different from, from this topic, but I'm, I'm happy to answer. And I think maybe the mayor may want to weigh in here as well.
You can ask me. I've been involved, touched with the fuel dock recently, if you want to ask that.
Well, yeah, I, I didn't, I mean.
It's, it's a huge project. It's been kicked around for twenty-five years or twenty years. And I'm on the Economic Development Committee with Councilmember Dinsen. And. As, you know, and so they actually are trying to work on, and then the Waterfront Alliance decided to work on it. And then the Waterfront Alliance is trying to kick it back. And really, it's, it's a huge project. It's, it's a massive undertaking. And so what we're trying to do with Economic Development Committee is actually reach out to the Port of Tacoma. And what we suggested is to have the Port of Tacoma, what would it take to ask the port if they would consider spending. Like fifty thousand dollars for consultants for a conceptual, to, to find out why, what, what it takes to make one. And we might, the city might match that of like twenty-five thousand with the port. And then because, you know, places are closing, they're not opening up. And so, and it's, it's, it's not a moneymaker. It's going to be subsidized. So. We really want to, and no one wants to take on such a big thing. So we want the port to actually go out to a consultant and find other places that have put in a fuel dock. In the last three to five years and say, you know, is this physically possible? What, what have you done? And then pay a consultant because no one wants to take it on. And really, we're all paying money to the port. So we, we do have someone on our committee that's on the port. And so that's, that's where that is.
Okay, well, you know, as you say, that, that's a monumental undertaking and it's. It's, it's a money loser. Otherwise, they, they wouldn't be closing up. And the whole floating fuel dock idea, that's a Department of Ecology nightmare. So.
Right.
I was just kind of surprised to see that because.
It's a carryover. Like she said, I mean, we've, you know, we've had council, past council members wanted it in our budget. And we actually had it there. But I mean, where do you go with it? So really, you need to go with a consultant, see if this is viable, if it's possible and what it takes. So we're going to try to. We just had a meeting last week on this. So we're going to try to talk to the port about instead, because everyone supports it like the port, but that's not enough. Tell us how. Fund us, fund a consultant.
Yeah, it, it, I mean. The capital construction is one thing. It's the ongoing operating expenses that are going to be the thing that strangles us. So.
Right, right. And I don't think any council wants it to be run by the city. We want an independent, independent body. Private entity that runs it.
Yeah. Okay. I was just surprised to see it there.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a long time carryover.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure, sorry.
It's a quick question. Do I remember correctly that there's two rounds during the year for grants or is there just one, one round?
Not usually. So in, in two thousand twenty-one, we didn't have as many applicants as we would have liked to in that first round. And we thought that maybe we could do a better job of publicizing it. So we went out with the second round, especially because it was a trial year to see if we could do this with a hundred and twenty-five. So given that it's an interesting year and that we didn't have restrictions listed until really spring, just about summer. Those events were very different. So we made an exception for last year, but really we'd like to keep it with the one. Application window per year so that it's standardized, everyone knows when to expect it. And then there we go from, from that point. I think it also makes it easier. Because we, we potentially could give away a hundred and twenty-five if we have great, great applications in the fall. Then that would negate a second spring opening. So.
And council had asked for a report before we put out the two thousand twenty-two grants. And we want to give those grant, we want to do that soon, right away. So. One year, they only had four weeks and we, we want to make it so that they have six to eight weeks. And so this will give Laura the ability to get, get those grants out there. And so they have plenty of time to. And so they have plenty of time to apply and then LTAC to review it and then council to review. Great, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your interest and guidance over the course of the last year.
Thank you. That concludes the staff reports now of public comments on non-agenda items. Tony, did we have any written notices on, written comments on something that's not on the agenda?
No, we didn't, Your Honor.
Okay. So try this. We, we are taking public comments from callers, correct? Yes. So if you're attending this meeting on Zoom, we're opening up the public comment now for items not on the agenda. If you're attending this meeting on Zoom, you can give, you can comment by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window. If you're calling in the Zoom meeting on, by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone. When using your phone to call in, you may need to press star six to unmute yourself. Your name or your last three digits of your phone number will be called out when it's your turn to speak. All speakers will have up to three minutes to speak. And Josh, I don't have my phone on up here, so if you can just keep a, a time on the three minutes and just raise your hand when, so I know that when they're done.
Yeah, we'll do that. We have a phone-in caller ending in eight, seven, four who's ready to speak.
Okay, eight, seven, four. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Kuhn, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Great. Hey, this is Tom Wick over here on Hunt Street Northwest in Gig Harbor. I wanted to follow up on prior public comment referring to public records requests and the Public Records Act. Anyway, on July 21st, I put a check in the City of Big Harbor's Dropbox for $100. And it was to cover the cost, all the costs to complete a public records request dated September 25th, 2020. Because one of the excuses I got for non-compliance with the production of requested records was my non-payment of a few dollars for the production of those records. So I had requested that Mr. Pisecki please email me a receipt for the $100. And I asked him to, of course, send any unspent funds along with the requested public records. And I didn't receive anything in the mail. I didn't receive a confirmed receipt via email. And I wanted to express that as a public policy and public concern. If it's happening to me, I have to likely assume it's happening to others. The specific record I'm looking for and requesting was a copy of all communications between myself. They were all emails, of course, and I asked for all attachments that were sent between myself and the City of Big Harbor since my arrival here in Gig Harbor back in 2010, up to the date of September 25th, 2020. And for some reason, there is a problem with the production of those public records. It would only take minutes to provide. The other issue is I want, the other issue is I wanted to alert the community that the City of Big Harbor apparently has an exclusive email address that they use to communicate with the city, the mayor and city council members. Instead of mayor and council@cityofbigharbor.net, it's councilmayor@cityofbigharbor.net. And I believe that was an oversight on Mr. Pisecki's part when he copied other entities in an email communication. I copied the same email address and I was informed it was an exclusive email community and that I had to request permission to join this special exclusive group. That is a concern, given all communications exchanged between the mayor and city council members are subject to public disclosure based on the Public Records Act. So I would ask that the mayor and city council please have a discussion about that. Please address that this evening before you conclude your meeting this evening. And I thank you for allowing me to provide this comment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other callers that wish to comment on non-agenda items?
No other callers.
Okay, give it one second. Okay, we'll close the public comment period on non-agenda items. Our first item tonight on our new business is the first reading of ordinance providing for the assurance and sale of limited tax general obligation LTGO bonds, refunding bonds 2021. The report tonight is our Finance Director, David Rodenbaum.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll be real brief. And then I have David Treger here from DA Davidson to answer any questions on details. Just in a big picture sort of way, we have $2.7 million in bonds outstanding for the Civic Center. The original Civic Center bonds were refunded by this 2.7 million. And it was, it was a bit more back when we refunded, probably more like six to seven million. And we owe 2.7 right now, the final payment being due in 2026. We now have the opportunity to pay these bonds off or refund them. And when we do that, we either write a check for the entire amount and pull them in and we don't pay any more interest on them, or we do a combination of new financing at a lower interest rate and a combination of some city money. And that's what we're proposing tonight. So the city is planning on putting in about 1.6 million, which will come from the Civic Center Debt Reserve Fund. This fund was started back when the Civic Center bonds were first issued back in 2000 for the express purpose of retiring the bonds early. And the city fell down a little bit along the way and we didn't accumulate the entire amount as we intended. And if you remember, we had the Great Recession when the bonds first came due and it was more prudent to hang on to the cash because we didn't know where the city was going. And we didn't want to have to lay off or stop projects, so we kept the cash. Well, things have turned out in our favor and we can now do this. We have the money. And so Mr. Treger will be telling you about the borrowing portion, but he's also handling the portion where the city writes the check and they coordinate the whole thing. And when this closes, he'll tell you when the closing is and everything. Effectively, the good news is he'll tell you about the present value savings that the city is going to get. But to me, as the Finance Director, the real savings, we're going to be spending $368,000 less each year on debt service out of the general fund as a result of doing this through 2026. So it's certainly going to make budgets a little less tight and maybe help pay for something else. So with that, I'll, if you, unless you have any questions, I'll let you have it Dave for a little bit and then we'll answer anything you can throw at. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Dave Treger, Managing Director with DA Davidson. I've had the pleasure of working with the city for many years, other bond financings. And as Dave mentioned, you know, we're doing this for a number of reasons, for cash flow savings. Interest rates are near all-time lows. We expect that we'll save about $1.84 million in debt service over the remaining six years of the bonds. These bonds are paid off very quickly. The average life of these bonds, although it goes out to 2026, is only about three years. So if we're going to accrue any savings, this would be one opportunity. The bonds are callable, in other words, you can pay them off at any time without penalty going forward. So the present value benefit net of your $1.6 million contribution is about $161,000 in today's dollars. But as Dave mentioned, because you are contributing those cash, your debt service each year will go down significantly, about, we estimate $368,000. We anticipate closing this bond transaction in, later in September. We'll be doing an RFP with a right of financial institutions to select the purchaser of the refunding bond. Those will provide the most savings for the city. To effectuate the bond transaction, there's one action item. The first reading is tonight. It is the Bond Delegation Ordinance, which has been drafted by your Bond Counsel, Cynthia Wead at KNL Gates, just before you. It's a lengthy document, but I can assure you it's a standard one that you've considered similarly before for other bond transactions. It's called a delegation bond ordinance. It would delegate to the mayor, city administrator and the finance director the ability to finalize a transaction, transaction subject to certain parameters that are in the, in the, in the ordinance, the most important of which is a minimum savings number, maximum principal amount of the bonds, maximum term of the bonds, which we're not extending. We're keeping that to the current, current, the current 2026 is the final, final payment date. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have about either the process, timing, or even the first reading of the ordinance, which is tonight.
Councilmember Ebersole. I'm sorry, Councilmember Fannett, sorry.
So it, it is 2026 when this new bond will be retired.
That's the final maturity. You're making payments every year. So the average life of the bonds is only about three years or less, but that's the final payment date.
Right. Well, I, it's not a really question. I, I was on the council before and I'm just finally, I'm very excited that we're finally going to have this paid off by 2026 because the, the whole idea was in 2020, as Dave mentioned, was to pay this Civic Center off early. So we're finally getting there and I, I think that's great. And as Dave said, that will free up quite a bit of money every year for the general fund. So, very good. And thank you for all your help.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm going to have to wait till this. Just, I want, just one more. I will, I have to finish this one and then I'll be happy to let you speak. Sorry. Any public comment on, I'm going to open up the public comment on this item. And then we'll get to, any, any public comment on the item of new business number one? Any written comments, Tony?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Anyone from the audience here that wants to talk on this item? Okay. Any callers wishing to talk on this?
No raised hands.
Okay, I will close the public comment. Council deliberation and action.
First reading.
Oh, it's first reading. Okay, this, sorry, this will go to our second reading. And I did, you know, this is our first time back and I, I forgot to see if someone from the audience wanted to comment on something that was not on the agenda. So I apologize for that. Again, it's been a year and a half. So I got the Zoom callers, I got the written. And so I'm going to open up the public comment from, on non-agenda items. So yes, please come forward. So apologize for that. And please state your name and address.
My name is Marion Wisham and I live in Rosedale Village.
And that can bend down towards you if you want the speaker. There you go.
Okay. I'm not even sure that this is the right place for me to be, but I have an issue I think is important. It's a safety issue that I think really needs to be addressed. I have frequently witnessed too many close calls this summer on Harborview Drive at Ansich Park area. There is no bike trail and yet there are cyclists who compete with cars for the road space. There is parking on both sides of the street and one, there's one lane in each direction for the traffic. Is there a way to monitor that area or perhaps require bikers to walk their bikes on the sidewalk for just that area? If you go there, you'll see what I mean, especially on a summer day that's busy down there. But I've seen so many close calls, it's, it's a little frightening. That's all I have to say. I, I have no solutions, but I thought maybe you might or know someone who does. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's seated here tonight or standing that would like to comment? Yes, come forward.
I'm Gary Williamson. I just live down the road and a citizen here 63 years. And I'm, I'm working on the Native Honoring Committee. So I'm going to go back a little bit and thank Burnsy for being involved. Kit for interested in this. And everybody so far that we've worked with has been interested. And it's a piece of Gig Harbor history. Native indigenous people who have not been recognized have been left out. And so this is going to bring all of that forward. And it's going to be a very happy occasion when we bet and dedicated and ready to go. It'll aid curriculum for our school students. People who are visiting town will be able to do this. And certainly, Kit wants to get this done before our new mayor moves in, so she can get credit for it.
It's not about credit.
Well, let's, let's hurry this up, huh? The Pu'ala tribe, tribe that was involved here in Gig Harbor, and they're very supportive too, as well as the Kiwanis Club and Art Commission and city itself. You've put a lot of money, money into it already. And so we're very anxious. We're very happy that these things are falling into place now. And it is coming along well and maybe by the end of the year, we can dedicate this honor. Shows the, one of the best Native artists in the state of Washington. God, and we believe that the job is exemplary all of the Northwest. Just the, just this afternoon, I received a message from the city saying that the sport base will be, is being designed. And that the 15-foot pole, that, that's not an easy challenge. I know that. And so that's a big job. The reason that I came tonight is that I would like to request, if we could have just kind of an informal meeting of our committee and staff who are working on this in the city, go down and talk about the setting of where this is going to be on, on the estuary site. And so I guess that's my plea is to take maybe our, so we can all kind of agree on what it's going to look like or how it's going to affect the whole situation depending upon where we set it. Who I talk to?
Jeff, because we did, we did show on the map where it's going to be.
Pardon?
On the map, we showed exactly where it's going to be. So I believe Jeff can show you where that would be.
Well?
So, because it's, it's, yeah, it's,
I, I, I agree with that, that it's on the map and all that kind of thing. But to be there physically and take a look at it would be very helpful for us.
Okay, I'll let you coordinate that with Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment at this time on a non-agenda item? Okay, thank you. I will close the, the in-person non-agenda item portion of this meeting. So thank you. Our second item of new business tonight is council chambers, audio video upgrades. The report tonight is our ITS Manager, Keith Smith. And with his crew.
Yeah. Let's test with that. All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The council chambers slash courtroom in the Civic Center requires a thorough audio visual upgrade to resolve technical and operational issues. These upgrades would allow the city and the municipal These upgrades would allow the city and municipal court to relay high quality interactive broadcasts of its proceedings to the public and increase transparency to the community. On this project, we solicited bids from multiple vendors that are on the Washington State contract list and received four proposals. We have selected a proposal or proposed scope of work from a company called Diversify to procure the technology upgrades. My staff from the ITS department and I are here and available for questions.
Okay, clarifying questions from council to staff, Councilmember Himes.
Yes, I read through the the technical description of this. But being a neophyte in the IT world, I was looking for what does all of this do for we average mortals that are gonna be using this thing? In other words, what is the what is the performance benefit? What is the the interaction benefit? What is the not only online but also in the chambers advantages of this system? What are we getting in in layman's terms?
I'm gonna defer that to my staff member, Nathan.
Okay, so we did do an assessment of the current equipment that exists here. The upgrade would actually allow for something that was not necessarily an oversight, but definitely something that that came up during this new wave of communication. We we discovered that communicating with the outside, staying connected with people who aren't here, people who are going to be remote is a necessity at this point. Additionally, in this current space here, we do have a speaker system and a microphone system that works. However, lacking, there is a big lack in the ability to cast and to stream outside of the chambers as well as video quality here in the chamber. The I think the biggest thing is that this equipment here is at an age where if it fails, it will need to be replaced at 100% cost. There's no support or anything on the current equipment that will provide a backup plan, really.
I guess it's just another question that I had, and then this may be off base from the intent of the project. But I happen to be hearing challenged. Okay. And the acoustics in here are not the best in the world, as we all know. Has there been any consideration of a direct Wi-Fi type system that the new hearing aids can actually pick up directly? They don't rely on the the audio in the chamber. You get a direct signal from the source. Okay, via amplification means and conversion to Wi-Fi. But you get it directly. It's very clear. Speech intelligibility is just outstanding in these things. Has that been looked at?
We did have the there are some audio devices that that we are because we are reusing a lot of the current infrastructure to save costs and to also ensure that we're able to upgrade it to its maximum potential. So there are definitely some devices such as the hearing impaired devices that we have that we can reuse as well as the the current speaker system and and audio will be improved with audio amplification, which will be brand new to the the sound racks that they're gonna have for for audio mixing and audio quality. So the ambient noise will be actually that be vastly improved compared to what we're hearing now as well as the here will be able to reuse the the hearing impaired devices that we do have currently on hand.
Okay. So the the short answer, I believe, is the Wi-Fi capability to go directly to a hearing aid is not part of this package. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It's not part of this package. After working with all of the state contractors that we worked with, we agreed that to stay closest to budget, our assisted listening devices are gonna suffice.
But would we be able to upgrade it in the future if we were so inclined?
That is a separate addition to the system, but yeah, it could be added in the future.
And Councilmember Himes, we you and I talked a little bit about this. The the quality of the audio and visual in the council chambers itself will be much improved. You'll be able to actually read a lot of the stuff that is up on the screen from the PowerPoints we show without them being in great big letters.
Yeah, and part of the upgrade will also be them coming in to reorient and redirect some of the speakers and levels of amplification. So you'll have a lot clearer audio profile sitting from back there as well as in the back of the chambers.
And our ability to stream the meetings, interact with people at home will be much more simplified. We won't be doing two or three different systems. We're trying to mesh together. And I think the one of the coolest things we'll have are the cameras themselves will be programmable with a whole bunch of presets. So right now, what folks are seeing at home when I do the high-tech thing of turning the camera back around towards you is one shot. But we can preset it so it could be we'd hit preset number one and it focuses on the mayor. We hit preset number two and it focuses on Councilmember Woo and et cetera. And so we can set it up that at a push of a button, we can get it to go to you. So we don't need somebody actually redirecting a camera either with a joystick or physically. I think that'll make for a much more smooth council meeting for people to watch at home and to watch the videos when they're looking at them on our on our website.
Good. Look forward to it.
Thank you, Councilmember Aberstol.
Yeah, Mr. Smith. You've got here the current screens do not support modern presentation formats. How long of a shelf life do we expect to have with these new cameras? You know, the way the state of technology is today, new revolutions are happening almost every single day and it's upgraded and upgraded and upgrading. So how much life are we gonna get out of these before we have to upgrade them again? Is it gonna be five years, two years, a decade? What can you guess?
Yeah, so the video compatibility itself, the cameras are gonna run and stream at 1080p HD with 30 frames per second, which is currently an industry standard specifically for government court and council streamings. That resolution will likely continue to be at least usable for the foreseeable future and the hardware will be supported for a minimum of three to five years individually, but can be extended with the extension of diversified's protection plan. And they will cover all replacements on that. So as long as 1080p resolution is supported for conferencing systems like Zoom and go-to-meeting and YouTube or whatever we decide to use, all of the hardware will be fully supported still.
Thank you.
Councilmember Franch.
Yeah, you mentioned that you received three proposals. Can you give me the range of the prices of those proposals?
The proposals ranged from what you see there all the way up to 160,000.
So this was a low, low proposal?
Yes. And it also, the recommendations there was the best. We also did conduct findings with other companies or other places where this company did work. So a lot of the the feedback that we got was positive.
Well, I certainly hope so because it's a very large sum of money.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, two questions. First, is any of this upgrade to meet a requirement that's mandated by the state for public meetings?
Part of the update will help us to meet the requirement of having separate cameras for defense and prosecution during court meetings.
That was my second question is this will be utilized for our municipal court as well?
Yes, this will be used for all of their in-person and jury trials.
So then in the budget consideration, some of this money will come from the court budget?
Yes, but we are trying to see if we can use the ARPA money for this. You know, the a lot of this, the ARPA, if we do a road project, it's 20% more as many of us as we all know, but this is different. This is just straight equipment. So we don't have to do that 20%, we believe. So if we can't, so we're gonna try to use it from the ARPA and if we can't, then that's very good. Then we can use it from the court.
Thank you.
That's good suggestion. I'm not sure if we had looked at that if if the ARPA doesn't. So thank you. Okay, I don't see any more clarifying questions for council. Any any I'm gonna open up the public comment at this time. Any Councilmember Woo, did you have a?
Did have a clarifying question.
Okay.
So sorry.
That's all right. Hey, it's been a while.
So I'm excited about this. Anything that brings our citizens more and gets them more engaged in the city and what they'd like to see from this community, I'm excited about. So what if I'm sitting at home watching the council member meeting, how will I do that? Will it be on YouTube? Will it be? How will I watch in my in my home?
So we will probably because we want to be able to take comment live from people at home, it'll still be on Zoom, the same format they're using right now. Because Zoom has the feature where they can raise their hand. We can we can recognize them and call on them to speak. So it will still be the same. We have the option to also broadcast live on YouTube, which we may do, but there's no interaction on that. So it's kind of just secondary. It's just repeating what we can do on Zoom.
And so we'll be using this for city council many meetings. Will be will we be using it for anything else, like any work sessions or any other meetings that we have open to the public?
So the planning commission also does their meetings in here. We have the option to use this, but we it will kind of depend on how many camera presets we can do, like what different kinds of setups we can do in here. That's something we haven't really discussed, like the extent to which we'll use it for other meetings.
Okay, and will we need a staff in here while the meetings are going on to operate this?
Yeah, it will take an additional person just to monitor the cameras. It's probably something the assistant city clerk that's usually here would would be able to do. So we usually have the two clerks anyway.
Okay, well, this is exciting. So thanks for working. It's not easy to put this together. It's even harder for me to understand what's going on. But anyway, thank you very much.
Yep, and then training for how to administer and work the system, that's all included. So we'll be able to train multiple people to operate this.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And we did have, when I first saw this price, I scheduled another meeting in here with staff to go over the whole thing because it blew me away. I thought it was gonna be we were balking at 30,000 two years ago and then it went to 96. Now we're well, now it's at 96. So they they actually walked me through. We actually had Mo in another room, Public Works, be on the screen and we talked of how people need, you know, staff, some the council sometimes uses pointers. So we want to make sure that some someone using a pointer works on the screen as well. And I didn't want to have to, you know, hire a whole new employee just to do this. And I was reassured that, no, we're gonna have at least three councilmen, three staff trained in this. And it is something that they can do while they're at the meeting. So it's not gonna have to be a separate staff person just to run this. And we went over the warranty and the timeframe. And at first, the the contract actually didn't say when they were gonna start and it didn't say when they were gonna complete it. And that wasn't gonna fly. So oh, and you couldn't read part of it. So we made it bigger enough, which we heard last council meeting so that you could read it. So this was fine tuned so that a lot of clarifying questions could be solved. Is there any public comment? Now I am opening up the public comment. There was no one, I believe, from the audience that wants to speak, anyone? Okay, is there any any written comments on this?
No, no written comments, no raised hands.
Okay, and I will open up for callers. Anyone attending the meeting on Zoom can comment now by pressing raise their hand button. Please do so at this time if you want to.
We have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll close the public comment. Now we have council deliberation and action. Councilmember Franch.
So I didn't quite comprehend what you said. Who will we need another employee here running this during the meetings or?
No, the training is a part of the proposal. So we'll just train existing staff.
So what the assistant city clerk or?
Yes, the the assistant city clerk would normally be here at the meeting, providing assistance to the clerk. That person would be trained to use the the system. And if the planning commission decides to use that, or if we decide we want them to record their meetings and broadcast them, then we would have the staff that are already there providing support, operating the equipment itself.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woo.
Yes, I move to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with diversified for AV technology upgrades in council chambers for an amount not to exceed 96,603.34 dollars and 50 cents.
Councilmember Aberstol.
I just would say we should probably turn the camera around for sake of transparency.
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, Councilmember Markman, second it. Any other council deliberation? Okay.
Help me. Does my light not come on?
No, it's not on.
Okay, so I'll wave.
Do you have?
Yeah, I just had a quick.
Does it work, though?
Oh, I
It's right there.
Thanks.
Test it.
I'm sure it does.
It works. Okay, that's why I didn't call you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to make a note that I would love to see us broadcast over Zoom or some of these other channels. Peninsula School District does it. And I think, you know, Zoom is great. And I know people can't interact using YouTube, but at least they don't have to go through one of those links and they're very familiar with with watching the public. So hopefully we can consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion. There's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. And then the second, actually our third item tonight is first reading adoption of ordinance 1463 budget amendment for staffing. And the report tonight is from our human resource director, Camille Borders. We'll give her a moment to get ready.
Good evening, council, mayor, and members of the public. Tonight, I'm presenting to you a budget amendment to reclassify a position and add some additional positions to the 2021 budget. I do have a handout. Josh. I'm gonna give this to you in a few minutes. I am gonna like to go through this agenda bill by department and so that you can ask the department heads any questions you have about the specific positions.
Does that get any clearer?
We could wait for the handout until the HR positions come up specifically for the HR positions. Sure, thank you.
Okay, let's just wait one moment. So go ahead and pass them out. That'd be great.
Okay. The first position I'd like to talk to you tonight about would be the reclassification of the associate planner position to senior planner. The city's associate planner has been working out of class as a senior planner since August of 2020 to assist with the emergent needs of the Planning Division of Community Development. It is the intent of the city to reclassify the associate planner position to senior planner and then eliminate the associate, one of the associate planners' positions within the Planning Division. Also in community development, we're requesting to add an additional building inspector position. They're experiencing consistently extremely high volume of inspections and the additional building inspector will give much needed relief to our current employees. And I believe that Katrina may address the number of ratio of inspections per employee that may help you with making that decision as well. The last one in community development is adoption of the Assistant Building Official Fire Marshal classification. It is in the 2020 It is in the 2021 budget currently and also in the organizational chart. This is just to add the position to this, the CBA salary chart. And we negotiated the salary with Teamsters recently. And so the salary then will be added to the corresponding salary schedule. But like, Katrina, if you could come up here. If you have any questions about these positions, Katrina will be available. And is it okay, Mayor, if we can just go through by department? So that way they have the chance to explain the positions as well.
Should we have questions for each department as opposed to waiting at the end, I think is probably?
I think that would be helpful for the council.
Does council have any questions for me regarding the community development 2021 staffing changes proposal?
Councilmember Franch.
Could you run that by me one more time about the fire inspector?
Yeah, the building, the Assistant Building Official Fire Marshal position was included in the budget request from my department last year. I believe that it was, I think Camille can describe it a little better. It was on the organizational chart and included in the budget totals for the department. However, we needed to memorialize the salary information because that was not negotiated with the union during their collective bargaining agreement.
So that, that position is not filled at this point?
It is currently vacant, and we would like to move forward in filling that position if council approves this tonight.
And will this position help aid us in, I, I'm sure you remember, I don't know if it was last year or two years ago, when we went through the whole fire inspection discussion? Will this position be offloading some of the fire department's work?
Not presently. This year, we're not proposing to have that happen. That would be something that we'd like to talk to the Finance and Safety Committee about into the future. This position, however, along with the Building Official Fire Marshal, would be the two positions that are capable of conducting fire inspections pertaining to plans review, that, plans that are coming in for review currently. Presently, the fire department, for council members that may not know, we have an intergovernmental agreement with them that allows the fire department to conduct business fire inspections annually. Currently, the city does not, city staff do not do that. We contract that out. However, in the future, this position could be one of those positions that could take on that work should other inspections and work reduce.
Well, and that was a whole thought process, as I remember it, during those discussions, was if things slowed down or there was a lull in, in other work to be done, that they could do some of this, these fire inspections to help produce that cost that went from, I believe, 80,000 to 150,000.
That's correct. And I just clarified that this more, or relooked at that this morning. And it does, that contract with the fire department does auto renew every January. And unless and until the city or the fire department, there's a three-month notification period. So if we get to a point where building, we're not receiving the applications or the inspection requests that we have in the past, this position would be able to conduct those inspections in lieu of a contract with the fire department.
And the, the other position is just a straight out building inspector?
That's correct. It's a building inspector, plans examiner. They conduct all of our building mechanical plumbing inspections as well as review for plans that are coming in. So there, it's kind of a dual role.
Right. Have we been getting close to not meeting the 120-day turnaround time on these permits?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and proceed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next position on the agenda bill is the adding of a classification of the wastewater treatment plant operator and training. Currently, we have a wastewater treatment plant operator position that is in the 2021 budget. We were trying to recruit for this position without success. So this was a creative option that we came up with to fill this position. And it basically adds one step below the operator position. The person will be in a training position until they meet the requirements of the job description, and then they would move into the operator position. So this would be no budget impacts on this position. Are there questions about this one? Jeff is also here to answer any questions if you have additional questions.
Doesn't look like any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next two positions are in the Information Technology Systems Department. The first is to reclassify an information technology specialist to an infrastructure engineer position, infrastructure systems engineer position. This, the technology specialist positions currently vacated due to a recent retirement. And so we're looking to reclassify that position into this infrastructure systems engineer position. It is a higher level technical position to assist with ongoing needs in the department. We have tried to post this position as a temporary position to fill the requirements that we need currently in the department. But we have also had, not had any traction with that position as well, probably because it's temporary. This position would primarily focus on phone systems, internal cloud-based operations. And these are items that we have previously outsourced that I believe that we brought back into this department. The next position is adding .4 FTE to an existing budgeted position. And currently, there is a .6 FTE Information Systems Assistant position. This would bring it to a 1.0 position. Let's see here. And so that would be three positions total within the department. ITS is constantly experiencing high volume of work. And to adequately support the continuity of services to all departments, we feel these positions are necessary. And these positions also help utilize and conduct day-to-day troubleshooting. We currently have two temporary positions that are assisting in the department to help fill the needs right now. And one of those positions would go away, but we're hoping to keep it till the end of the year if possible.
And, and then the intent would be, as part of the budget process, the, that one temporary, the one, in a way, we would propose, if we're able to pull together the documentation and the justification to, to do so, put it into the 2022 budget proposal from the mayor. But I want to emphasize, that decision has not been made. We are still working with Keith on how we will put that together.
But before the budget is final, council would get to see the work that the current IT was doing to justify, you know, putting in the 2022 budget. There's a question from councilmember Woo.
I do have a question. So, and this is probably exactly what you just said, but if you could explain it to me a little different way. I see on here there's an IT Systems Assistant Temporary Position proposed for the 2022 budget. So I'm guessing this is what you were just talking about. So if, so this, explain to me how this works. Explain to me how this works.
Okay. So currently, IT has three people working in it. One is the ITS manager, Keith. And the other two are temporary employees. And the two gentlemen that were with him this evening, as we were talking about the AV equipment. Well, we're, and then, so that's the, the physical capability we have right now. If you look at the budget, what we have is the ITS manager and information technology specialist and, and information technology systems assistant at .6. So 2.6 FTE versus the three they have in there right now. Okay? So what we're proposing is we take the position that is at 1.0, the technology specialist, and convert that into this engineering position at a higher level to do higher level items. And I can have Keith come and talk about that in a moment if you'd like. And we're proposing that we take and add .4 to that .6 to top the department up to the 3.0 that it physically has right now. But rather than being one regular, two temporary, it would be three regular positions.
And so when would the pay begin? If this is proposed for the 2020 budget, is there any salary difference if this is approved?
For the 2021 budget, for the upgraded position, we do have some numbers in here. The total impact, if we were to hire it for the last quarter of the year, would be $24,000. That's spread across four, I'm sorry, five different funds. So the general fund impact would be 15,000. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. I apologize. For the infrastructure systems engineer, there is no budgetary impact because that's already budgeted for, for a full year in, at the lower level. We would have three months worth, if we're lucky, to get someone that quickly. So budgetarily, there's no impact for that for this year. The big impact comes next year when the position is full-time.
So we're really not changing the budget for 2021?
Only for the .4. And that is an additional.
I'd also like to just point out also that there wouldn't be no budget impact for 2022 for the infrastructure systems and engineer position. And the 2021 is based on an October 1 start date. There would be no 2022 budgetary impact because we have budgeted excess amount for this position because the person that was just recently retired was topped out in that position, and we're not anticipating hiring at that level.
Okay.
And these prices also include benefits and everything.
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, so we, we understand the physical impact, which is nothing this year. However, it will be greater next year. And next year, is it the intent to get one more FTE in that department?
That is what we are working to justify.
So we know the numbers, and we know how many bodies we have. But the position is a little bit different. So my question is, the three bodies that I'm looking at tonight, will they be the same three bodies?
Not necessarily. They would have to apply for the positions because they got hired as temps.
So my understanding is then you would go to the outside to hire somebody when we already have somebody that's been working. We know their work ethic. We know how good they are. We know they show up. We know we get along with them. And now we want to go to the outside and hire somebody else to replace them?
So the public, how the public sector works for recruitment is that we have to open it to the public so that everyone has an opportunity to apply for the positions.
Are you telling me we did that for every job we've hired in the last two years?
We have, if they're a nontemporary position. That is correct.
But temporary positions, we can?
You can appoint them.
You can just grab. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead and proceed.
Are there any additional questions on the ITS positions that maybe Keith can answer for you?
Rodenberg, you completed your question.
Okay. Moving on to the HR section. So we're proposing adding a position, HR analyst is at 1.0. We are currently, we have an unbudgeted HR analyst position. And they've been assisting us since November of last year to, to support the ongoing needs of the HR department. And they will be focusing on full cycle recruiting, succession planning activities, job classification, job description updates, onboarding, other high-volume needs that are occurring in the department. Also, we are asking for an additional HR assistant position. We currently have one temporary unbudgeted HR assistant position that's been helping us through COVID. And we'd also like that position to continue to do the COVID mandate requirements, continue with record maintenance and focusing on direct support for our high-volume HR needs. I have attached a, I think Chief Bucy handed out the chart that I've created for you this evening, which outlines each position and what they're doing in the positions currently. So it shows you the current position, HR Director, the responsibilities I'm currently conducting myself. The, the next section is the HR Analyst. That's a temporary position that I'm requesting this evening. The duties that they're working on currently. The HR Assistant Temporary Position and the duties they're currently working on. The Payroll and Benefits Administrator, that's a currently budgeted position. And she is the only person right now in the city that runs our payroll. And so what we've done with the HR Assistant Position that says HR slash payroll, we recruited for a position that could help her out so that we have some backup and continuity in the payroll and benefits section. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about either of these positions as well.
So just like the IT, you have some of these people right now that if you don't, if this doesn't pass, then they're let go of, that?
That is true. Yes, they're currently filled by temporary employees.
And how, and when would those positions end if we don't fill it?
The HR Assistant Temp position would, we would have to notify her probably this week that the position is ending. And then the HR Analyst position, it only lasts for a year. So she would be notified that her position would be ending in November.
Thank you. Let's see. I may not have known who went first. Councilmember Franch.
On the HR Assistant slash payroll, how, how much of the time is spent on payroll or would be spent on payroll?
Probably half of the halftime.
Thank you. Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised that, that there's no position request by Public Works, particularly the engineering area. The material that's in the deck tonight, particularly on the timing of projects and everything, they've struggled now for a year and a half at least, maybe, maybe two years would be better, a better guesstimate. But there's nothing in here relative to them. And I'm wondering if this process should be a 2022 discussion with Public Works in there, particularly if we're, if there's any kind of a lid on headcount that we've got or that's perceived. I think we got to give those guys a fair shot. I, I'm convinced they're going to be in the, they will be in the mix. They better be in the mix, okay? Given the, the difficulties that have been encountered for the last year and a half or so relative to timing of projects and completion of projects.
How about, how about if, when we're done with HR, we'll have, without putting Jeff on the spot too much, we can hear from Jeff on that?
Okay. I, I would just like to make sure that we don't set up, set up a system where the first one to the trough wins, okay? That is, if there's valid needs out there in other areas, I'd like to see the whole, the whole playing field, let me put it that way.
I appreciate that. Also, I'd like to just inform you all that we have been having to deal with COVID requirements on a daily basis for the past year and a half, which has taken up a lot of our time. And so we are behind in our department just because of the nature of COVID. So I appreciate that, though.
And I would add that we have filled a few engineering and public works positions over the last few weeks.
Yes, that's correct.
So the cavalry is partially coming for Jeff. And I, I know he's evaluating his workloads and his resources. And he'll be coming forward with requests for more resources if he needs them.
Is that good enough for you?
But right now, I think he's really busy onboarding these people and getting them productive.
Right. Also, so you said you're behind on things, so those things don't go away. You have to catch up on that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a policy thing that hasn't been changed, hasn't been updated since 2007?
So we're in the process, and I have been for the last four years, of updating the personnel manual that was from 2007. And we're in the end stages of that right now. We also need to update the safety manual that was from 2014. And we have been ongoing, when positions become open, updating job descriptions. But not all job descriptions have been updated since 2007. We also are working on our family and retention records, online evaluation system that we need to activate, digital time cards. online evaluation system that we need to activate, digital time cards, supervisors, union, CBA, policies, revisions. There's a lot of larger upcoming recruitments. And we, we also anticipate that 18 employees out of our, our employee group will be eligible for retirement in the next three years.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, the, the two temporary personnel you have in your department, I assume they were appointed by you?
They were, we went through a recruitment process. And yes, they were, I selected them as part of the recruitment process.
Will those two positions go out then to public for posting?
They will.
I'm familiar. In fact, I have the records of both the City of Paulsboro that has 104 employees. They have one HR staff. And they cover, their job description is the same as this sheet you put together here. Salary is only $70,000. City of Port Orchard, they have 86 employees. They have one full-time HR analyst. And I have a formula here put out by a Human Resource Trade Association that says that if you have 100 to 249 employees, your HR representative to employees should be 1.26 personnel. So I'm having a hard time understanding why your, your department is so large and that you want to increase it even more.
Well, I appreciate that. I also contacted Port Orchard, Paulsboro, Bainbridge, Squim, and Aberdeen as part of me looking at these positions as well. I sent an email out to my HR group. And Port Orchard has 93 employees and they have one HR manager and one HR specialist. They do not have payroll in their department, though they do help out with benefits. There are other things that they don't do that we're required to do at the City of Gig Harbor. They use public safety testing for their police departments. In fact, pretty much every other department does, that I've contacted. We do everything in-house for high-level recruitments as well. They are using consultants. And if that's kind of the route we're headed, I think that's what we're going to have to do too, is hire some consulting firms to assist us with our HR needs.
We do that in Public Works, but the lack of hiring enough people there. There's been, Public Works projects have been put on hold. And we've, I think the last council meeting, there was three, maybe four things brought before council, services contract to hire consultants to do work. And the reason that we needed to hire consultant at higher than what it would cost if we had an employee is because we didn't have the staff. So I would think possibly that's something considered for HR. If those services are available, like you just mentioned. Thank you.
Well, one, one thing about the consultants though, when we've been doing for two years, we've been doing NeoGov and HR has been actually been the one putting out the call for a new candidate. When we looked for a city administrator a couple of years ago, it cost us about $35,000 to have Proffman do it. And we could do the same thing. Yeah, if we don't get HR assistant, we can do $35,000 for the park manager. We can do $35,000. That's bare minimum too, just so you know, because we, we had five bids when we took Proffman and they were rock bottom. So you can eat up $100,000 in having, in not having HR do it. You, and actually, I was very pleased with, with the hiring process that we got. But again, you can spend a couple hundred thousand dollars with, with outside firms hiring the people for you too.
I think it's a matter of priorities. I think that recruitment and benefits, probably the number one priority of HR, being a wellness city and saving 2% on our, our health insurance is a good thing. But I think that we should prioritize those things. And if necessary, go out to consultants if we feel we really need to have that service. But recruitment, which is failing at this city, in my opinion, and it should be number one priority.
Councilmember Denson.
So I had a couple of questions. I just wanted to confirm, and I think I understand it now, but from this chart, we currently have three full-time HR folks and you're asking for two more, correct? Two that are temped, okay. All right. Well, I would also like to just lend some support to Councilmember Heims. And what he said, I know we, we think a lot similarly on this issue with Public Works. I'm happy to hear that we've got some more folks coming to help Mr. Langhelm and his department. However, in my opinion, I think Councilmember Heims shares this opinion. I think we need more engineers so that we're less reliant on consultants. I understand it takes some time and planning, so I appreciate that. But it's definitely something that I'm interested in as we keep putting off projects and we have so much in the queue for this year and next year and moving forward with continually putting those on. So my last question is unfortunately not related to what you're requesting here, but it's about the parks manager position, since we are talking staff. Is that posted again and what is the status of that?
So the position, we have sent the job description over to the union to review and waiting to hear back from them. And I think that per our discussion later earlier this evening, things will be a lot, go a lot smoother.
Okay, go ahead and proceed.
That's all I had for this evening. Thank you for your consideration.
And if you have any additional questions about IT, the chart that Camille put together, I asked Keith to put together a similar chart and I'd like to distribute that to you right now. So you have that as you start your deliberations. So Keith, if you would. And I'll go ahead and turn the camera back around, so it's on the council.
Okay, with this, I am, there's no objection. I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess. Okay. Called. City Gig Harbor Council Meeting of July 26 is back in session.
Yes. You can see, all right, I, I have a few comments I want to make on this particular item, including a few thoughts on financing that we haven't touched on yet. When it comes to the requests that we are making here, there's a combination of why we're asking for these things. Some of it is we have people that are doing work out of class. They need to be compensated for that. Some of it is we can't find people to come in at entry level because I don't want to say our standards are too high, but finding people to do those jobs who are qualified has been difficult. And most of this is based upon more work that is coming in. The Planning Department and Building Department, they have a lot of work coming in. And as I know I've said in the past, when it comes to that operation, it is driven by what comes in the door. We have timeframes we need to meet. Therefore, we need staff to be able to meet those timeframes bluntly. When the economy, at least for building, starts to slow down and the work isn't there anymore, unfortunately, that means we need to staff down in order to make sure that we are not, that we're, that we're, that we have the revenue to pay for the employees. I don't think I'll be here when that happens because I envision the building process is going to be happening for the next several years. But I can assure you, at least my attitude has been, and I know I hear this from the mayor, that this is the way this process needs to work. And I've done that in past jobs where the building slowed down and the building staff needed to be cut back. And I have every belief that that would happen here. With regards to IT, I passed around the list of things that they do, put in the same format as the HR Director did. One thing I really want to emphasize is there is an awful lot that they're doing that could be farmed out. Some of it used to be farmed out. It's been, been brought back in-house. That gives us a lot of control over how our systems are set up and how they're maintained. And quite frankly, having someone right there who knows the system and can deal with the problem is very nice compared to having a contract company who's doing some maintenance. Sometimes it takes a while for them to respond. The HR positions, I'll say it now, I've said it many times. HR is a place where if you aren't doing things right, you can invite trouble. You can have complaints, lawsuits that come out of a whole variety of things that are not being properly handled. And a lot of the things that we're, that HR deals with are mandatory things, things that they need to do, compliance things that they need to make sure that we are taking care of. When it comes to the finances and the money available for these additions, for the rest of this year, I think we clearly have the revenue stream coming in. I have the Finance Director here who can provide more detail. But our revenues are coming in very strong for this year. He's projecting to come in even stronger next year and the year after. As he was just telling some of us a few moments ago, our sales taxes are coming in pretty strong, particularly from big boxes and online shopping. If you think about how things have been going for the last year and a half, people have been doing an awful lot more online shopping and I can expect that to continue. And the good news is, is when you order something online and you have it delivered here to Gig Harbor, we get the sales tax. That's not the way it used to be. That changed about seven years ago. It used to be that the sales tax was collected from the place where the item was delivered from. So if you ordered something and it was delivered to you from a warehouse in Kent, Kent got the sales tax. Now if it's delivered from Kent to here, we get the sales tax. We've had a lot of sales tax coming in from building. That I don't expect to continue over the next three to five years. At some point, things are going to slow down. Again, thinking of the way things have been going the last year and a half, a lot of people have decided, great time to remodel the kitchen or finish the basement or, or put an addition on. I don't anticipate that's going to continue, but the building of new, I think will continue for the last, for the next several years. There is capacity for the amount that we're talking about for next year and the year after. If you want any more detail about the budget, Dave is here and he can provide that for you if you want to see a few more numbers. I've talked to some of the council members about this particular item. And the question I've gotten from just about all of you is, is this really needed from my perspective and from my experience? And the answer is yes. IT, when I was in Des Moines, I had three, but they had a very healthy budget for consultants and they were able to make do. I took a look at some other cities, just like Councilmember Rodenberg did when it comes to HR. And when I looked at IT, the magic number for a city our size is somewhere between two and four. And the big difference was how much money did they have in their professional services line item? With that, I'm ready to answer any questions that you might have as you're deliberating. Staff is still here. They're ready to answer any questions you might have as well. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kuhn. I have another clarifying question for Ms. Borders. It was triggered by a couple of things that Councilmember Rodenberg brought up about when we do and do not have to go out to the public when recruiting for positions. We've talked about a couple of instances where we'd like to reclassify positions. So if you reclassify a position into a, a position, obviously, that, that we didn't have before, do we have to go out to the public to fill that position?
Not if the person's already in the position. We're reclassifying the existing position and they're in that position. So you would not have to go out for that.
And they're generally doing the work of the higher classification.
Correct.
But if it's a temporary person in that position and you reclassify that position, I think that was one of the instances in IT, then you do have to go out.
If there is a temporary hire, they're not a regularly budgeted position. So we would post the position so people have the opportunity that wouldn't apply for a temporary position to apply for a regularly budgeted position.
Okay, thank you.
And when it comes to recruiting for positions, this was mentioned before the break. Generally, in an organization, you'll see recruiting done by HR for the lower-level jobs. But once you start coming into those mid-manager, department director level jobs, a lot of organizations go out. So for their city engineer, their public works director, their HR director, they will bring in a consultant to help them cast the net, so to speak, as wide as they can. Some of those firms are very good. Some of them are, are fair at doing the job. We've been doing a lot of that internally. And from what I've seen, the candidates that have been brought in seem to be pretty good folks. And they seem to be good at their jobs. That's telling me that Camille and her staff know where to look, know how to put together a recruitment brochure that entices people to say, hey, interesting job, I think I'll apply for it. Experience that I've had doing recruiting is putting together a good brochure, putting together a good marketing, essentially, plan to touch as many different places where people might be looking for that next job is really important. And I think the staff here has been doing a good job with that.
So Jeff, Councilmember Heims still told me during the break that he wants to, he wants you to clarify engineering. So I don't want to.
Yeah, but basically, what are we looking at going forward, let's say, into 2012, 2022 and beyond? Okay? So that council can get the whole picture. This is, this is what the, the employment situation looks like ending this year and going into the 2022 period.
Well, Public Works is just finishing drafting the 2022 budget. We do have new positions in 2022 budget for all of Public Works across all divisions, engineering, operations, and wastewater. As far as engineering related to capital projects, we are proposing an additional position and to help address and reduce the amount of consultants that we hire and potentially increase the number of projects that we have coming through and are able to get through design permitting and construction. But specifically to your question of what does our outlook look like for projects? Our three utilities and our Parks Development, Parks Capital Fund, and Streets Capital Fund, and all of the planning documents that go along with that, transportation plan and the three utility plans and the pros plan, which is being updated now, show that we will have plenty of, plenty of projects on the near horizon, six-year, that the citizens are requesting, councils requesting. The big-dollar projects that are typically funded by Streets Capital can be funded now in a number of ways. We've increased our impact fees. We now have our transportation benefit district. We haven't paid anything out of that transition benefit district to speak up. So there's going to be a lot more money coming in and a lot more requests for getting these projects not only through the planning stage, but into the design and construction stage.
On the, on the, particularly the engineering heads, we put in two additional FTE, I remember, for this year. And didn't specify whether, it was just FTEs, okay? Is, are we to the point now, we have enough confidence that some of these FTEs can be permanent FTEs employees?
Well, what, what, if I recall correctly, the 2021 budget said three FTEs or equivalent consultants. And it was, the number was three. And so we have a consultant contract already let from earlier this year for a consultant to do the work of three FTEs. They've already completed a few of those projects, one of them being the Morgan Crosswalk Improvements, another one Bain Apprentice, Fenimore Conceptual Design, and a few others. So we are going to be utilizing them, the, the, the three FTE equivalents for some capital projects this year. And as Ms. Borders said, we have been able to acquire backfill the positions for, in engineering that when, will hopefully be up to speed and fully on, back to our previous levels by mid-August.
Yeah, something I, but by the way, I've been keeping track of those contracts. And I'm, I'm rapidly becoming convinced that in-house will win the race on costs, okay? Because you're paying, you're paying, not only paying for that engineer, you're paying a fully loaded cost, including the profit margin of whoever the consulting firm is. So it's automatically built in there, okay? So it's automatically built in there, okay? And, and I guess the, the only advantage, or the big advantage to, to purchase services is you can be flexible. If things ever go down, you don't have to lay people off or anything like that, or consider reduction in force. You just say, hey, I'm not going to write that contract. But I'm, I guess what I'm fishing for here is, are we to the point where we're reasonably confident that going forward, and I'm talking five years out, we have the work within Public Works, particularly engineering, that we can make some of those people permanent employees?
I, and yes, I am reasonably confident that going over through the next few years, that we will be able to keep the additional engineer that's being proposed for the 2022 budget fully busy with design work. It's, it's as long as the number of projects aren't reduced, which I don't see that happening. I say, I can say that even without adding new projects or even more projects, that we would be able to keep that person busy. But I know we're not talking about 2022. I think we're getting a little far off in the topic here, but yes, we would be able to. And, and I want to make sure that we're very aware. Katrina and I have made this presentation to council in January that there's impacts. I mean, you, 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 if we're talking about increasing projects, that's a whole different topic of just trying to increase staffing to reduce consultants, but keeping the number of projects the same. Because there's an impact to community development. About one out of every five capital projects has an impact on community development.
And I look forward to the 2022 budget process with great anticipation. As like I say, this is a, is an ongoing thing that's not going to go away unless we fix it, okay? And I think we have the opportunity to fix it. So, great, thank you.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, I have a question for Keith. Thank you very much for putting this together. It's certainly shows the response, it's not in the same format as Human Resources, but it certainly shows the responsibilities. It's in the form of an organizational chart, and you can help me understand it a little bit better. It appears you have an ITS manager reporting to an ITS manager. So let's forget about the top ITS manager, and can you tell me the IT support technicians, of which you have two here, are those the two existing temporary employees you have?
Currently, yes, those are the two employees that I currently have today.
So your dream team, well, the team you'd like to have are these two IT support technicians, yourself and one new person called Infrastructure Engineer.
Yeah.
So if this is approved tonight, the two temporary people you have will not be going away. Is that correct?
They would have to reapply for those positions that are advertised.
I, I think that's nuts. I agree that it might be policy or something, but we know those two guys, they are very impressive.
So if I may, what, what happens is if you approve what we have in front of you tonight, the, there will be three permanent positions in the IT department. The manager, the engineer, and the one technology assistant or whatever we're, we're.
That are one support.
There won't be four like this show.
There will be three, but there will be a fourth who will still be a temporary through the end of the year.
Is there any intention of making that temporary permanent?
That, that's what we were talking about, is coming forward in the budget process for 2022 and trying to make the argument that that position should be made permanent.
Okay, good argument. All right, thank you.
And I might add, so the, the IT manager is, is actually going to replace someone we had for many, many years. So someone left to, okay, and then instead of just showing you that we're going to do four in 2022, we're doing, we're going to do, or we're going to prove to you that that other person would be needed by the workload that they would show in the next four months.
So again, if this is approved tonight, your two temps stay, and you'll work for an infrastructure engineer.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll have to correct that. What'll happen is the one permanent position will be recruited for, and our two temporaries can apply for it. Let's assume that one of them gets that permanent position. The other one stays on as a temp until we figure out what council's going to do and approve for the 2022 budget. I cannot guarantee that one of those two will get that job. They've been doing a very good job, and it's very likely that they would be the chosen candidate. But again, because they're temporaries and the policy that we have, we would go out and see what the market brings.
Those same kinds of things take a while, and we're getting past halfway point of the year. So in essence, if, if we really needed it, and we could move quick enough, you could essentially appoint another temp, somebody we don't know yet.
Potentially, but.
Okay.
Councilmember Vanage.
Thank you. Well, you know, we've just gone through a year and a half of some very unprecedented times, and I, I don't know if we've been hitting on all eight cylinders with the present staff we have due to the remote working, just due to the whole turmoil in general of COVID. And for me personally, I, you know, I think that this, this whole idea, other than some of the reclassifications that, I think that this needs a little bit more thought. And for me personally, at this point, until I get a chance, and, and I'm very, I, I just realized that you want us to pass this on first reading, which, you know, I, I never vote yes. Or I don't, that's not my policy. So I would like to have time to digest some more of this before I make a final decision on adding these jobs. And I, I think in fairness, the new council and the new administration should have a chance to come in and analyze for themselves what has been going on up here, and then make a decision next year on adding more employees at this point in time. This, this mid-year hiring thing is, it's pretty, it's, it's very unusual for the city of Gig Harbor to, to do something like this.
Your Honor, it sounds like we're slipping into council deliberation. Perhaps we should ask for public comment at this point and then have council deliberate.
That sounds good. I will open up the public comment. Any one here? I think it's just staff, but anyone here who wishes to comment? Okay, are there any, any public, are there any written comments that were turned in?
No written comments.
Okay, I will now open it up to the people that are on Zoom. If you're attending the meeting on Zoom, you can comment by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window. And if you are calling in Zoom meeting by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone. When using the phone to call in, you may have to press star six to unmute yourself. Are there anyone from the public that are wanting to speak from Zoom or a call-in?
We have no raised hands.
Hey, I'll give it one second. Okay, I'll close the public comment. Councilmember Wu.
Yes, thank you. So I, I myself, we're in deliberation now, I guess. I myself have some concern about doing everything mid-year, but there are some positions, I think, that are really urgent and important. So tonight, I move to approve ordinance number 1463, amending the 2021 City of Gig Harbor budget at first reading to include only reclassification of associate planner to senior planner, additional building inspector, salary adoption for assistant building official slash fire marshal, IT positions, and adding classification of wastewater treatment plant operator and training.
I second that amendment.
So that included everything except the HR positions?
Yes.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a second, and yes, you said multiple ITs, okay?
Yes.
Council comments? Councilmember Aberstol.
Yeah. I'm thinking a lot about things from the past and, and the present. I know that when I ran for real, our election, the first time, we had a lot of comments from the community who were saying they want to get our city off of consultants, and that they want more things done in-house. I know that we've had discontent with our staff, and I know this from our survey, that they didn't feel that they were listened to. And I also know that there's discontent within the community who feel that things aren't getting done quickly enough, that we're putting too much workload on our already existing staff members. Now, for example, Jeff Langham has to do a lot of stuff for the parks. And, you know, those kind of things are running through my mind right now. So I'd like us to think about that. I think when staff ask for help, we should listen. I know that we need to be fiscally responsible to our citizenry, but I also feel our citizenry want our staff to be happy. I don't want them to be overburdened, overworked, because that kind of discontent just makes them angry and makes them want to leave. And we've had a lot of discussion about how when staff leaves, it just costs the city more money to replace them. So those are the things that are going through my mind right now, and I guess where I'm going to go. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I have to say, I think a lot of councils, several council members are putting their personal agenda ahead of the needs of the city. And this has turned into a way of trying to punish certain staff. And we've seen this play out, that the Washington State Handbook basically says, if you have a strong mayor form of government and you, and you start meddling with the day-to-day operation, you will cause turmoil with the city. And I feel several council members have just done that. And they put their own personal agenda ahead of the needs of the citizens. And they've used some of the staff as pawns, which is very, very disturbing. So, and it's, as Councilmember Aberstol put, you know, it just brings, it just, it just shows what's happened the last year and a half. Instead of trying to bring the city together, they've worked hard to tear it down. So it's disappointing, especially because you were elected to represent the citizens and bring the city together. That's my feelings. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to push back a little bit on, on that because I think what I've heard some of the council members say is that they're not, not opposed to these positions necessarily, but they're opposed to the timing that normally we would discuss this during, during the budget cycle, which is going to be happening in just a couple of months. HR has these two positions that they're requesting be made permanent. They have temporary folks in there right now, so it's, they're still having the FTEs doing the work. But I think, and I, and I share Councilmember Wu and Councilmember Rodenberg's concerns, that it's nice if we can take a holistic look at the budget and a holistic look at staff during the budget process like we typically do. So I will be supporting Councilmember Wu's amendment.
Councilmember Vanage.
So could somebody read back Councilmember Wu's motion for me, please?
Well, it's pretty straight, because it's basically amending the 1463 to support the hires except for HR.
Oh, everything other than HR?
Yep.
Well, then I would, I will vote no, just because it's first reading. But I completely agree with the mayor that this is targeting. This appears to be more of the political motivated attacks on certain people.
And I hope the public takes note. Also, Council, also Councilmember Denson, two HR will go within, one will go within next week, that's working right now with this. And the other one, contract ends November. So they will know after this reading that they will not have a job in November. So they'll probably be starting to look right away. So within a month or so, we'll probably have two, we'll have two HR gone by next week. And we'll have another one, one gone by next week, and the other one will be gone by November, if not sooner. Councilmember Markley.
Yes, thank you. I just wondered about the timing of the first reading. Is, is, is this because there is one person you'd have to notify, like tomorrow? And that's why you're wanting adoption on first reading versus second?
Yes, that's part of the reason. The other reason is that we need these positions filled immediately.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion, there's a second. For the amended motion, I'm going to go down the.
Eric, can I, can I make a clarification that this is first reading adoption of an ordinance? So we do have to have a majority of council plus one to approve?
Okay. A majority of council plus one, so we need five, correct? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. All those in favor of adopting the amended motion, say yes, and I'll start with Councilmember Denson.
Yes.
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 You know, it should be part of the 2022 discussion. I'll say no.
Councilmember Vanage?
No.
Councilmember Aberstol?
I'm going to say no on the amendment.
Councilmember Markley?
This is extremely difficult because I have no political motivation. However, given the timing, I will, I will support this, but I want to bring, if we can bring this back, at least the discussion on the HR positions, if it's possible to bring that back to a future meeting, or at least have some more time to digest this. I know we're losing one person if we don't.
Right, well, it is kind of yes or no, but even I wanted you to vote, but it's, it still won't pass, even if you vote yes.
Okay.
A majority.
Because it's a supermajority.
Okay.
But that's, I still want your vote, just for the record.
I'll vote yes, for the record.
Okay, so motion fails, so. Tony? Or council? Where, where do we fall on this? Do we? Well, actually, that's, that's amended motion, so we, it's back on the table. So it's back on the table, and I think we, this is people's lives. So let's talk, let's, let's, let's work it out tonight.
Yeah, so I have a question given, and I'm sorry if I missed this before because I figured these temporary positions, like the IT positions, would go on till the end of the year. Is there something that we can do to, to make sure that Ms. Borders has what she needs until the budget can be discussed, you know, properly, or no?
Yeah.
How difficult is that to extend those temporary contracts?
That's a good question. I think we want to follow state guidelines. Could we, I mean, it seems like we have two ITs that are temporary, and they're here now. So we obviously think we need them. We have two HR that are here now, so it obviously seems like we need them. Let's exclude the other positions for the moment. Could, could council pass these positions to, because a lot of these are, they have a whole nother year of a budget. Could they pass this through the end of the year?
But when it comes to budget authorization, as Camille has told me, the mayor's authority and the way we have been doing things is the mayor has authority to create a temporary position for a term of up to one year. We could jump through a couple of hoops, lay off the one person whose contract ends here in a week or so, and then bring her back on another contract at a future date within the next couple of weeks. It's, that it's frowned upon to do things like that if council hasn't given authorization to do so. But if your intent is to give us some time to put this through the budgetary process, rather than doing the mid-year, then if council, and I don't need a vote or anything like that, but if if council is comfortable with the mayor making a reappointment after the person has been separated for a week or so, we could go ahead and do that. The person who is in November, hopefully by the time we get around to the end of her contract, we would know better whether or not council is going to support the permanent position for those. The other option would be to pass the entire thing on to a second reading on, for the meeting on August 9th. We can still keep the one person on board until then, or I think if her contract ends, you might have to be gone for a few days. And it would give us an opportunity to do a little bit more analysis, do a little bit more, I guess, putting together the argument that we need those positions now versus later. And then the third option would be to make another motion. Well, I take it back, send it to a second reading, and then on the 9th, if Councilmember Woo's original motion to exclude the two HR positions was made and seconded, then it would only need four votes to pass rather than five.
So one thing is, I've obviously seen that the, the variety of city administrators, department heads, and myself found the need of having these temporary people. That's why they're here now. Instead of coming to council with permanent positions in the last year, you know, the department head and two city administrators and myself saw the need of those temporary positions. That's why they're, that's why they're working for us, to get the jobs done. So that is, you know, three people that thought that. So I'm gonna open it up to the four, Councilmember Markley. Okay, can you, can you run those options one more time?
So we can just say that the motion has failed, the ordinance has failed, and we explore ways to jump through a few hoops to keep the HR people on until the end of the year. Or alternatively, another motion could be made to pass the ordinance on to a second reading. And at the second reading, council could adopt it as it currently is, because you only need four votes at that point, not five. Or Councilmember Woo could make the same motion, just to adopt part of what we're proposing, and that also would need just four votes to pass. And if the city attorney is listening to me, please make sure I am, I am speaking truth. There he is.
But the third one, wouldn't that need what we just had, a supermajority? If she, if she
No, once you've passed it on to a second reading, the amendment, or the ordinance can be amended.
Got it.
And then adopted.
Still go to the second reading, that's why.
Right. First, adopting first reading requires five votes, go to a second reading, you just need four votes for whatever it is you do.
Hey, I meant to, I told you I was gonna call on you every little bit, just to let everyone know you're still here, and I forgot. Don't worry, we still have five more council bills, so. So he's got it all right, correct, Tony? I mean, correct, Daniel?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and Daniel, if there is support on the council for everything except the HR positions, could we have a council member make another motion to do so, which just failed, or do we need to bring that back at a next, a future meeting?
It would need to be different in some way, or I, what, what would be proposed to, I mean, you could, we've gone through this, you could do a reconsideration, but that would have to have somebody that voted, there would have to be a difference in vote. So I think that there's potential to have another vote on this tonight, but you'd have to have a different motion.
Right.
So the first motion would be a motion to reconsider?
Correct, that can only be, this is gonna get a little complicated because it failed due to lack of total votes, not because it was voted down. So it would need to be somebody on the prevailing side, which is the non winning side, for the lack of a better term, needs to bring the motion to reconsider. So you can't have the exact same people do the exact same thing.
So is, does that mean a motion by, made by someone who voted no?
Correct.
All right. Okay, Councilmember Rodenberg, I'm gonna get back to council.
I, I think, given the new information that the city administrator gave us, that there is a way around having the HR people stay, even if it was a two-day furlough, they could be reappointed. I think that information should have brought, been brought forward before the former vote to make sure we all, because I think there's people that voted against that, because they thought they were gonna lose an employee. So I would like to bring it back for another vote, knowing that we're not going to lose somebody until the end of the year. And secondly, I take offense that you're always saying, that someone always saying that it's politically motivated, when there's no evidence, just because things don't go your way, doesn't mean it's politically motivated. Just because things don't go your way, does not mean there's special interests involved. It just means the majority of people wanted that, or somebody did, and I wish everybody understood that. I, what possible political motivation could there be? So getting back, I think that we should reconsider that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Woo.
So what does it mean? Sorry. So what does it mean to reconsider? Daniel, perhaps you can help fashion a new, a new, but I can't do this, because I voted yes, so it has to be someone who voted no, is that correct?
That's what I believe Daniel said, but let's explore one more issue, and that is technically, Councilmember Woo's motion was to amend the, the ordinance to remove the two IT department members, is that correct?
HR.
I'm sorry, HR.
Correct.
Therefore, the main, they, there's still an opportunity for a main motion, just to adopt the ordinance as is.
Is this is only till the end of the year? Correct?
No, if you adopt the motion as, the ordinance as is, it creates the new positions. But it still needs five votes.
Right. For first reading, right. Councilmember Dinsen.
Yes, I concur with Councilmember Rodenberg that I like option number one, that Mr. Faisaki mentioned, that we do whatever we need to do to keep the HR temporary folks here till the end of the year. Because I don't think that we're gonna have enough information or enough comfort by, by the next council meeting to take this to second reading. I really feel like this needs to be looked at with the full budget process. I absolutely understand why we had a lot of temporary folks working this year. COVID put a lot of additional obligations onto HR in particular, and some of those will continue into the future, some may not, but I think we need to take a holistic look at at the sides of our HR department, and we can do that through the budget process. So I will make a motion to, I basically want to make Councilmember Woo's motion and add, and I'm not sure how to say this, but add authorization for the mayor to extend the temporary positions for the two HR positions till the end of the year. There's probably a better way to say that. But that would be a new motion that we could vote on. Right, Daniel?
So it would be a motion to a top 1463 with the difference concerning HR to have those two positions through the end of the year.
Temporary through the end of the year, yes.
I'd like this
Should I read this motion? Should I read the amendment again?
Well, just, I want to make sure that Tony, Daniel, and that we're all, that's all legal and everything like that.
Daniel?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a new motion, it's still going to need a majority plus one, because we're still on first read. The, and the only thing that I'm not involved with is your human resources and employment law matters, so you have a separate attorney for that. But you've worked on, with those temporary positions, obviously historically and currently. So I'll defer to Camille on that and those conversations. I just don't know how those may or may not need to be bargained, and the sequencing of laying somebody off and hiring somebody and whatnot. That, that's not what I advise the city on, so I would defer to Camille on whether that's been done in the past, and whether there might be some procedural steps that should be taken to do that. I wouldn't think that that would stand in the way of this motion, but it just should be understood that it would need to be accomplished or carried out in the appropriate manner after consultation with your employment attorney.
So, since you know the status of Diane and different people.
Right, I'd like to confer with Sophia on this as well. But, thank you, and I'd like to just say this. Even if though my positions aren't on here, I would recommend that you approve the other ones, because the departments really need these positions, and they can't wait. So if it means that I don't get mine now, I'm totally fine with that. I just need these positions to pass for our employees. Thank you.
So in order to do that, that would be the exact same motion that Councilmember Woo made to reconsider that, someone who was on the the prevailing side, which would be those who voted no, would need to make a motion to reconsider. Correct me if I'm wrong, Daniel.
We can't just do the new motion?
Parliamentarian-wise, no. You really need, someone needs to, a motion to reconsider that's seconded and approved, and then you can make the same motion that Councilmember Woo made.
But my motion was slightly different, because it authorized the mayor to execute at least one new temporary contract, and the extension of the one that is ending in November till
Daniel's that different enough for you?
Yeah, I do think that that's different enough. So, yeah, so I think that that motion that was just made can stand on its own, have deliberation, and have a vote, and if it passes, a majority plus one would proceed.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay. Um, okay, we've got, everyone, does everyone understand that? So before, okay. So what we've got, and Camille is still gonna have to, I believe Camille is still gonna have to talk to Sophia, even if this passes. It doesn't mean that she's gonna, it's gonna work, because she has to talk to Sophia, but basically what this is, is it's, it's approving 1463 with having the two HR through the end of the year as still temporary. And then that portion, she's gonna have to double-check, but it will let everything else go through. And then if that works, if it works, great. If it doesn't, she'll come back to us or won't have those positions. Does that make sense? And it has to be, because it's first reading, it has to be at least five votes.
And so is it time to ask questions?
Yeah.
So, so we will get the senior planner, the building inspector, fire marshal, wastewater treatment, technology, technology folks. And we're just, we're, we're basically telling the HR people who are temporary here, you're here now, then you gotta go, then you gotta come back.
What it's, it's telling me is figure it out, how to keep the HR people on through the end of the year, and continue putting together your argument that the positions are needed for, on a, on a permanent basis, and we will do that.
Right, and I support what's proposed, because it, as staff needs the help, so they really do. So I would, I hope council supports that in the supermajority on the first reading.
Are we voting?
Yes, I'm gonna say, all those in favor of that, say aye. We'll start it with Councilmember Dinsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Woo?
Aye.
Councilmember Heims?
Aye.
Councilmember Vanage?
No.
Councilmember Abersold?
Aye.
Councilmember Markley?
Aye.
1463 passes with amended motion. We have new business item four, which just a second, is South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Intergovernmental Agreement. The report is by Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight before you is the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Intergovernmental Agreement. You may recall a few months ago, the mayor and I brought this to you in a work session, so a lot of this may be sound redundant to you, but for the public's edification, the, in the fall of 2018, and I'll stop, Mayor, if there's a point when you would like to interject, as you've been very involved in this, feel free to go to do so.
Thank you.
In the fall of 2018, Executive Bruce Danmeyer and Tacoma Mayor Woodard put together a group of mayors in order to form a coalition to look at housing affordability and attainability within the Puget Sound Pierce County region. The discussion focused on what could be done collectively in Pierce County, and as we've discussed previously at the Planning and Building Committee, some of these larger goals of the, the Growth Management Act can be done more efficiently on a regional scale, whereas the city staff were relatively small compared to other jurisdictions, so by partnering with other jurisdictions, we can get more work accomplished that way. That group was soon titled or called the Mayor's Roundtable, and they focused again on housing affordability, how we can give incentives for developers to build affordable housing, and a path forward for continuing to collaborate. In 2019, the Roundtable began calling itself the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners. And at that time, they also instituted a staff working group of the member jurisdictions, where staff would advise the the Mayor's Roundtable on items that are within this contract, or in the agreement, excuse me. Within this, the county and the group selected a consulting firm Cedar River Group as a consultant to work it, to look at forming a regional coalition for affordable and attainable housing. The agreement in front of you this evening is the culmination of three years' worth of work, where Mayor Kuhn has been instrumental for the city of Gig Harbor on this committee, as well as Senior Planner Carl DeCemus has been greatly involved on the staff working group. Within the agreement, the SHAPE coalition will be formed. It would be governed by an executive board that is put together of elected officials from all member jurisdictions. That can be the mayor, it could be a city council member, or the city administrator may also sit on the executive board, and that can be determined by the council each year. The coalition will also have an advisory board that will be comprised of key stakeholders within the community that have the charge of furthering housing affordability and attainability. Pierce County, it has agreed to act as the administrative entity and fiscal agent, so their staff will house the SHAPE 1.5 FTE. That means those people, the, the staff will be under the administrative guidelines of Pierce County, their personnel regulations, their all of things of that nature. SHAPE will include originally, initially 1.5 staff to provide services to all of the member organizations. And SHAPE will be structured to include the possibility of creating a, creating a housing capital fund that could potentially fund housing affordability projects and purchasing of land in the future. The city of Gig Harbor's share of the SHAPE interlocal agreement, intergovernmental agreement, excuse me, for the first year is in an amount not to exceed $5,000. The reason we do not have an exact amount tonight is because each member jurisdiction is taking this agreement to their councils or boards. And once we have, once we know which jurisdictions have signed on and which have not, then the city would get its final total, but it will not exceed $5,000. Something else that's very important to consider in this interlocal, intergovernmental agreement is that each member jurisdiction will receive one vote. It's not based on population size, it is based on the member jurisdictions that are participating. So Pierce County and Tacoma, although they have significant greater population than the city of Gig Harbor, will have an equal vote to the city of Gig Harbor on, on policy items, legislative items, et cetera. One last point I would like to make is that this intergovernmental intergovernmental agreement will further the work that is required under the comprehensive plan to work on housing affordability. With the staff level that we have currently, we don't have the one point five FTEs to dedicate to bringing housing affordability and attainability to the region that this intergovernmental agreement would allow for. So, we believe that it'd be a great bang for a buck. It would allow for additional regional coordination of this and hopefully get some attainable and affordable housing projects on the ground that could help our region. So with that, staff would recommend that council authorize the mayor to sign the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Intergovernmental Agreement with final terms to be added consistent with ratification date. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Councilmember Dinsen.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Knudsen and Mayor Kuhn for participating. I think this is awesome. This is wonderful. We really need this. My question is, our share is not to exceed five thousand dollars, and maybe I didn't hear this part, but we're saying that SHAPE is going to have one point five staff. So that does not seem nearly enough to support one point five staff, even with the number of other jurisdictions participating. So I just wasn't clear on that.
I apologize, Councilmember Dinsen. I should have been more clear on this. So the jurisdictions, although we each get one vote on the executive committee, it, the funding is based on population. So for instance, the city of Tacoma, Pierce County, they'll be paying a much more significant share than the city of Gig Harbor. So ours is much lower, and we do get an equal vote with the rest of our with our sister jurisdictions.
Yeah, the great thing about this is we're not all, we're all not all getting hiring one point five each. That we're actually, it's gonna cost like three hundred thousand dollars or something for this. But we're all sharing those one point five, all the Pierce County cities that do this, but because it's done by population, like Tacoma's gonna pay probably over a hundred thousand dollars. And, yeah, two hundred.
Two and fourteen thousand.
But the, the thing that, this is, it just shows such a good relationship with the cities, is because we've been doing this for so long that we all have so much respect for each other, that we all still feel that everyone's vote should be equal, which is phenomenal for the smaller city. So, yeah. Councilmember Woo.
Yes, I think this is a great idea as well. I, I'd like to know when the progress reports will be given to the council. I read in here that the progress reports will be given to the executive board quarterly and annually to the legislative body of each party. I guess that means Olympia. But when will the reports on what's happening get to the city council here in Gig Harbor?
Well, they're all public records, so I would, I would believe it would be shortly after the executive committee saw it.
Is anyone going to make a presentation on what happened in these meetings?
Councilmember Woo, if I may, the, the intent of the executive board meetings, the actions that occur at those meetings, the staff member, likely the senior long-range planner, will receive a debrief or potentially attend those meetings and will be able to report regularly either to the Planning and Building Committee or to full council.
Great, thank you so much.
Councilmember Markley.
Uh, thank you. Yes, so this employee, will they, they'll be an employee of the county?
Technically, they will be a Pierce County employee, although within this contract, again, they are responsible to all member organizations. Pierce County is agreeing to house them in terms of giving them an office to work out of, provide them computer equipment, things, things like that. But they would be responsible to each of the member organizations.
Okay, yeah, this is great. I, I'm looking forward to seeing how this develops, for sure. This is near and dear to my heart. Thanks.
Well, you're wanting to, you have your hand on the, okay, great. We will open it up for public comment. Thank you very much. It was a great, complete report. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone from the public that wished to comment that wrote in, Josh?
There's no written comments submitted.
Okay, I don't see anyone from the public that, I will open up, anyone from the public, since there's those that are calling in that are here, would they like to speak? Okay, there's no one from the public that would like to speak. Anyone that's phoning in right now on a Zoom, we're opening up to callers. Please press star nine or, or six if you'd like to talk. Do you have any callers?
I see no raised hands.
Okay, I will close the public comment and look for council deliberation or a motion. Councilmember Heims.
Uh, yes, I would just add, as far as council deliberation goes, now in the bargain price, the leverage here is phenomenal. But it doesn't lock us into any specific action, which I thought was a key point. That is, we, we initially entered this thing basically on a, on a learning basis called our experience with affordable housing right now in Gig Harbor is close to zero, okay? And this was a, a non-committal way to at least find out what's going on and basically piggyback along this group and, and learn more about this whole thing and what might be best for Gig Harbor. So I am definitely supportive of this thing.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion too. Uh, I will make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Intergovernmental Agreement with final terms to be added consistent with the ratification date.
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Markley. I don't see any other discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion passes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Will you let John know tomorrow and Marty?
I'll notify them tonight.
Thank you. Uh, council bill number five is Stinson Harborview Intersection Improvement Public Works Construction Contract Award and Professional Services Contract for Construction Support and Materials Testing Services. The report tonight is from Public Works Director Jeff Langill.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Council. Just reoriented here. Make sure my computer's up and running. Right. It wasn't me, was it?
Sounded like a record player.
Uh, not the DJ, trust me. Not the DJ. Before you tonight, is a council bill that requests authorization for a public works construction contract that is related to, and other related consultant contracts and change order authority to allow for the construction of a new roundabout at the intersection of Stinson Avenue and Harborview Drive. I'm gonna show, here, share my screen. Show what I believe to be a fairly easy view of the site and the project. This is the landscape plan that was approved for the project. As you've seen in the council bill that was provided to you, this project exceeds the project budget that was developed for the two thousand twenty-one budget. I understand this overage is not at all ideal. We did anticipate that this project would be over budget as we proceeded through the design. Please recall that we assembled project budgets for the next year's budget in fall of the previous year. As we proceeded though, for this project, we did realize into two thousand twenty-one until the bids were open that we were going to be exceeding the two thousand twenty-one budget. This was discussed, it's, it's alluded to in the council bill under fiscal consideration. We did discuss with council some of the issues that were going on as we proceeded through the design in two thousand twenty-one. Specifically, we did note that the gravity sewer was going to be a big, was going to be a big impact to the project. You can see though, from, or there, there was some of the additional costs, a few hundred thousand dollars, just under three hundred thousand dollars was due to the gravity sewer main. So there's another, what, six hundred thousand dollars, five fifty or so, that was additional costs for the project itself. Back in February, staff came to council and with a contract amendment for TSI related to added scope, added project limits. Council authorized that amendment to TSI's contract. Therefore, TSI proceeded with bringing forward a design that adjusted the original design for all of those issues. Those issues specifically, want to list those out for you so you have a good understanding of what the changes were. Grading and ADA project scope adjustments. This was also expansion of project limits along all three legs of the project. And more extensive water sewer utility relocations that were not originally anticipated and driveway adjustments. Essentially, we had to look at the project limits both to the east, to the north, into the south, and the, how this project was going to impact the sidewalks, primarily sidewalks, driveway entrances. And we had to go back and regrade a much larger area. Uh, one additional item, while we had talked about the parking stalls that are going to be constructed as part of this project that were actually associated with the Eden Boat project that's in the budget that we were needing to add that scope to this project. The contract, or sorry, the budgeted amount was never increased to accommodate those additional parking stalls. So when you take the whole of all of these adjustments, increased scope, ADA adjustments, the parking stalls, by the time we got to the engineer's estimate, you know, this spring, we did recognize that, have a better idea of how dollar-wise, what those adjustments were going to do to the construction project. We did adjust as part of the public, or sorry, as part of the transportation improvement program tip, we adjusted the construction dollar amount based on the engineer's estimate. The engineer's estimate, the spring came to about, I think it was two point one eight million dollars or something, two point one six million, somewhere in there. And so it was very in line with the construction costs that we saw and the bids that we saw for bid opening. So it's a reasonable cost assessment based off the expansion of the scope and the expansion of the project limits and the addition of the sewer and the addition of the parking stalls for Eden Boat. But I do want to recognize and acknowledge that we staff didn't come to council often enough to update you with more specifics and how those would be impacting this. And so it, to, to council, it can very much seem like a surprise that this project came in at such a high cost. It wasn't necessarily to, to my staff, but I want to make sure that that, those types of surprises don't happen in the future. But even with that, staff is still recommending that we have, receive authorization to award this contract. One of the big things I just wanted to point out before I close here is that there's a significant increase going on, and I'm sure all aware of it, in construction costs, materials costs. One of the key items that we have on here is asphalt. We have to do a few lifts of asphalt. There's quite a few tons, I think it was nine hundred tons. The standard price, the unit price of, per ton of asphalt, standard unit price per asphalt prior to the last twelve, eighteen months was about a hundred, a hundred and ten dollars a ton. This bid, the low bidder, bid one hundred eighty-one dollars a ton. So not quite one hundred percent increase, but quite a bit more. And so those are the types of issues that we see. For example, even the sewer pipe for the gravity sewer, we couldn't find it when we were starting to do our design. Darrell and his crew looked all around with their suppliers, and we ended up buying those materials, and they're now stockpiled at the city shop waiting for this project to bid, because we wanted to hold those in place and hand those over to the contractor because we didn't think the contractor could find them. And so they're sitting in our yard already paid for, ready to go and hand over, so. But the construction materials prices, as you all have heard, impact our projects too, and that has been another reason why I believe this project continues to climb. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Hi, Councilmember Markley.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Langham, so the parking spaces that you were talking about, so these would then be taken off of the cost of, was there, was there anything else left for the Eden project, whether it's the boathouse or the, or the brick house? Were, were those parking spots still attached to that project going forward, or would, or is this just like, did these, did this sort of replace those spots that were gonna be needed for, for the brick house?
I'm sorry, are you specifically talking about the cost for the?
The cost for the parking spots.
We estimated that the cost of the parking spots, parking stalls would add about eighty thousand dollars, but we didn't add it into the Harborview Stinson budget. And it was not a part of the original Eden Boat contract that was awarded either. It was just a number that we estimated out there, but we didn't actually place it into a specific capital project.
Okay, and were these the parking spots that were gonna require variances? I don't remember, I'm just trying to
Have to ask Community Development Director Knudsen if they required variances. I don't recall if they required variances. I know that we were requiring to, required to have additional parking beyond what we were already proposing for the site related to the Eden Boat Brick House.
Right.
Community recall. But I don't know if they required a variance. Do you recall?
I'm just trying to tie all these projects together that are in the same area in my, in my memory. So thank you for telling me.
Councilmember Markley, the parking stalls that were located or are being proposed or are going to be located here did not require a parking variance. However, we did look holistically at parking, because we could not fit all the required parking on the site. We did allow Public Works to create new parking stalls within the city's right-of-way and associate them with this use.
Okay, great. Great, thank you very much.
Uh, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Thank you, Director Langham. It can't be easy coming to council and telling them the project is increased by a million dollars. But you explained it really well. I understand all of that. So my question is, given the increase in asphalt among other building materials in this contractor, does the contractor have any kind of escalation of cost in his contract? Or once we sign this, are they tied into it? Or if it gets, if it increases another thirty percent, can they come back to us? Or do you anticipate any other add-ons by contractor?
Well, this contract that we have, it does not have an escalation cost factor. What could increase materials costs and when the contractor could revise those costs is if we suspend the project and say, oh, well, we're gonna carry it over beyond the number of days. I mean, we have a number of working days allocated, and, and right now it's allocated into two thousand twenty-two. And, but if we were to get into two thousand twenty-two for whatever reason and say, okay, well, we're not gonna start the project, and we're going to extend it out into September, October of two thousand twenty-two, then the contractor will be able to make a claim against the city for increased materials costs. But right now, we don't have any of that in.
But this is one of our projects that we really need to get done, unlike some others, because the costs do escalate. So, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment. I don't see anyone here that wants to comment. Is there any any written comments, Josh?
No written comments.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up for people that are listening on Zoom or phone. If anyone wishes to raise their hand, please push star nine on your phone or star six, one or the other.
No raised hands.
Okay, I will close the public comment. I don't see, is there any other, yes, there's some other deliberation. Councilmember Vanage.
This project went through an exhaustive public process last year. Two years ago, two years ago. And was hijacked, the first meeting in January of last year. I never supported this project from day one. This or the Stinson Rosedale project, I think those, both of those projects could have been put off. Part of the negative consequences of development is traffic. And during the peak hour is when those intersections And during the peak hour is when those intersections experience some delays. But that is the cost of a growing city. Both of those projects have turned, are going to turn Stinson into a more of a major roadway than they should have been. The whole idea when the East West Road was talked about thirty years ago was to take traffic away from downtown. This is a project, both of the Stinson Rosedale, Stinson Harborview are adding traffic to downtown. So they're it's a bad project.
Councilmember Abersold.
Yes, thank you. I guess my first question would be to Josh, is there anyone online watching?
We currently have eight attendees.
Okay, good. And that was checking just in case we kept going to public comment. I was like, was anyone there? I think I have to disagree with Councilmember Franch. I don't know about the hijacking or anything like that. I'm not going to talk about that. But I think that as our community grows, not just Gig Harbor, but Pierce County. And more and more people are moving into this area and more and more houses are going to be built. More and more people are going to be coming into our town to shop, to hang out, go to the waterfront. And Harborview Stinson is going to become a more high-traffic-volume area. As people are coming into town and then leaving town, that's that's the two places where they're going to be going. So I do think this work needs to get done. And I guess that's all I got to say.
Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, I guess just to reflect on origins of this project. The traffic models that we had gosh, three years ago. Said rather conclusively that this was by far the most efficient way to offload traffic off of Soundview and Harborview, okay? Particularly people going through downtown, which seemed to be the bottleneck today during the peak PM hours. This was the way to do it. As Councilmember Franch indicated, we looked at the 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 east-west proposal. Councilmember Malich was a proponent of that. And the bottom line of that was we we guestimated, we were probably talking at least thirty, thirty to forty million dollars to pull off that deal. Which was basically not in the cards. So to make do with what we, what could we do with what we had in terms of roads? To improve intersection delays, this was the primary way to get it done. And that was the origin of this thing. I'm not happy with the the two, two point four million dollars, but given where we are, I don't see an alternative other than continuing with this thing. This is the way to go long term to move traffic through Gig Harbor in an orderly fashion and in a safe fashion. To to alleviate some of the concerns that, by the way, they will come back as the pandemic backs off, the peak PM traffic was going to go right back up again. So that's kind of where I'm at on this and I'm supportive of it.
Okay, I'm just waiting for council to make a motion. Councilmember Rothenberg.
We're already starting, are we still in clarifying questions?
No, we went through public comment.
Oh, sorry.
There's a long one here. I'd like to authorize the mayor to, I make a motion that authorize the mayor to execute a public works construction contract with Active Construction, Inc. In an amount not to exceed two million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and one cent for the Harborview Drive and Stinson Avenue Intersection Improvement Project. Authorize the item number two, authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract amendment for the construction support services with Transportation Solutions, Inc. In an amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, twenty-one cents. Item three, authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract for materials testing and construction testing laboratories in an amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Item four, authorize the city engineer to approve additional public works construction contract expenditures up to one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Councilmember Heim. Councilmember Heims.
I was going to second, but I think
Yeah, you had your light on that. Thank you. Okay, any other deliberation? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstain? Council motion passes six to one. Going on to new business six. Community paddlers dock, public works construction contract award and professional services contract. Report is from our public works director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. Josh kindly reminded me to turn on my camera this time. So the council bill you have for you tonight for the community paddlers dock is once again requesting authorization for awarding a public works construction contract. This time it's with American Construction out of Tacoma. And then to authorize a change order for construction of the community paddler stock. I'm going to share my screen here and write a quick site plan. Community paddler's dock. This is a plan and profile view taken or from the bid documents. As noted in the council bill, and when we discussed this project at the February twenty twenty-one council study session. We presented a project that also happened to be moving well north of the original, well above the original budgeted amount as identified in the twenty twenty-one budget. We did identify at the February study session, a variety of options for funding sources for this project. When the construction cost estimate was at six hundred eighty-three thousand for the construction itself. I have available that that funding table from February if you want to see it. But we did modify the funding table slightly from the February twenty twenty-one study session. It is actually now the funding table that's identified in the council bill itself now on the screen. At, from the February twenty twenty-one study session, we also added the Gig Harbor Canyon and Kayak donation at one hundred fifty thousand. We also added the Port Tacoma LED IF funds at twenty-five thousand, which I still need to finalize that grant. And then we've increased the hospital benefit zone. Back in February, we originally said hospital benefits own at two hundred forty thousand. We've increased the hospital benefit zone to make up a majority of the difference from the original project estimate. And then also increase the I'm sorry, reduce the park impact fees. In February, we proposed increasing park impact fees to two ninety. And here we have it identified at one sixty. So balancing that out, this is the recommendation that staff has for funding this project. Again, this this contract has in, came in slightly above the engineer's estimate, which again was six eighty-three. This project is low bid was seven fifty-nine. If approved tonight, we hope to have this project underway in August and construction completed before the end of twenty twenty-one. You'd like more details on the construction costs? I know Councilmember Franch provided to council a through Mr. Stecker, the marine floats quote. And I can go through that in detail if you'd like and and provide council with an understanding of what the differences are because the a big oversight, or sorry, a big overview of the difference between the marine floats contract or the marine floats quote and the city's construction cost estimate has to do with a lot of requirements that we are putting in there that were not covered as part of that contract. And I can go through those if you'd like, or if you just want to understand that the engineer's estimate was fairly consistent with the contract, we can just move forward. But that's the end of my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Dinsen.
Did marine floats bid on this project?
They did not. They did not bid on this project.
Okay, my second question is, does this project include any of that mitigation of that old pier next to the, like, that's off the Jerkovich, you know, I'm talking about?
Yes, I know. In fact, let me go back to the, you're talking about the pier that is here underneath the existing catwalk. No, it does not. This only includes mitigation that is essentially self-mitigating. We're removing solid concrete, removing significant number of creosote piles. And then there's a very small area that we had to do additional mitigation on that is over near Edden Boat. And we're going to be picking up some concrete stormpipe that is on the seabed and that's going to be the additional mitigation. So that's our mitigations project. This, the the pier that you're speaking of, the old Jerkovich pier. That is, we're keeping that for advanced mitigation for the community or sorry, the commercial fishing home port float system. So Mayor Keane's been working with me and Army Corps on that.
Now, we were trying to do that at the same time. If if we pass this, will will we have time to, if that happens, will we have time to come back to council? Obviously, we what we would actually want to add, could we add that to this project?
We wouldn't be able to add it to this project. What we would be able to do is put another contract out for advertisement and potentially award another contract. I would say that it would be possible definitely for advanced construction to bid on that. I mean, they're welcome to. And if they are already mobilized at the same time for their construction, which again is going to occur just before the end of this year. Then that would be advantageous for them because their mobilization costs would be very low for the advanced mitigation project.
Since we've tried to work on that with Army Corps for like two years. What is the chance of them completing what we need? To get that, even though it doesn't have to do with this contract, but it's right there.
Yeah, we are, our consultant provided comments back to the US Army Corps on the advanced mitigation project. Two weeks after the Army Corps provided their comments, the Army Corps provided their comments in July, our consultant provided it mid-July a week ago. And so we're now waiting back for the Army Corps to provide their comments back. We will continue to push the Army Corps to provide us revisions based off or 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 comments or a permit based on our consultants responses. I, as we all know, we can't push the Army Corps too far, too fast. They work at their own pace. So we will continue to do that. There's also a memorandum of agreement that I need to work with Department of Fish and Wildlife on. That's a process they have. I hope to get to that in August. And then as long as that agreement is approved by DFW and the city. That will be over and done with. We can just move forward. It will just continue to be waiting on Army Corps. But I do have a meeting as since we're talking about this topic with the planning department reviewer tomorrow to talk about this project and see what steps are left to take because my understanding is we're just waiting on the Army Corps.
Thank you. Other clarifying questions for council? Okay, I'm going to open up a public comment. Is there any one that's listening that would like to push star nine or star nine, star six to speak? And Josh, were there any written comments?
No written comments and no raised hands.
Okay, I will close the public comment period. Councilmember Franch.
Thank you. Yeah, my first question was is like the, about the advanced mitigation and remove that. So that that answered that. You know, I don't know. I don't know, probably not too many of the council went through this. Not even really sure what you call this. I guess the plan specifications for this project. I don't expect the council to really support me on this, but is, is part of this plan that was submitted by DGC for the design. They've included lighting in the, similar to what is in the handrail. Well, the the railing that goes around the Antage Park and the real small LED bulbs that are down at the Welcome Plaza at Jurisich Park. And you know, I think it's, looks pretty cool. I mean, if I was in a different city and and I saw that, I'd go, that's attractive and I like that. But to add, to add those even at the above the the viewing platform at Antage Park, in no way fits into the historic working waterfront. And in no way fits in with the characteristic of the Millville neighborhood there. I think it was a mistake to even have those lights put in the railings on the viewing platform. And I just happened to notice that now they're included in the the ramp going down to the float. So just bringing that to to people's attention, you know, some, over time here. We we talked about different things and some council members want to talk about protection of certain things and this doesn't ever see any, to be much consistency with that that notion. So, thank you.
Councilmember Luke.
Thank you. I move to authorize the mayor to execute a public works construction contract with American Construction Company, Inc. In an amount not to exceed seven hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred twenty-six dollars. And number two, I move to authorize the public works director to approve project change order expenditures up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Council deliberation? Okay, all those in, if we've heard a motion, we have a second. Okay, Councilmember Markley.
I'm sorry, I'm getting used to this light. Thank you again. So I didn't want to just dismiss right over what Councilmember Franch was asking. I haven't seen the plans, you know, or seen these lights. Is there a rendering of these lights? Do you know the cost of these lights? I mean, there have been several neighbors that have complained already about light pollution and with this increased light pollution, does that ramp have to be lit? I know the other ramps in town, I don't think are lit. So I just, I thought we could just explore that a little bit more. If there's any kind of cost saving, if the lights aren't necessary, if it is going to detract from, you know, the historic area of town, you know, I just thought I would embellish on that a little bit, just get some more questions answered.
Sure. I, if you want me to, I can bring up the cut sheet that Councilmember Franch is referring to is in the plan sets. I didn't, I don't have that page queued up. I have other sheets from the drawings queued up. And I can bring that up if you'd like to see it. The lights, LED lights are very small. They're within the rail, handrail itself. And they aim down at your walking surface. I don't know what the costs are. We did not bid this out to tell to identify costs of each individual fixture like this. My guess is that those LED fixtures and the units that power those are going to be very inexpensive, a thousand dollars or something. I can get that that number, but I will I cannot get that number until after the contract is awarded and we ask for what's called the schedule of values from the contractor. And then I'll be able to find out how much they, because they're then required to tell us how much they bid for those types of individual items.
Okay, great. Yeah, I didn't want it to delay this going forward or anything. I'm supporting this, but just just wanted to see if that was something that could be taken away later if it wasn't needed or if it's not too expensive, maybe there's some more, you know, public input on that.
We we did hear loud and clear from the residents that lived in that area when we did the phase one construction of the Antage Waterfront Park about how bright it was. We, when this project was originally in design, we turned to the consultant and said their their initial proposal was to do similar lighting on the their, their initial proposal was to do similar lighting on the dock, on the float, on the, going down the gangway, so that there would be no voids, no holes, dark spots. And we pulled them back and said, no, you're not going to do bright streetlights over the dock and floats. You're going to do minimal lighting. And so we had them pull back and do what they thought was the absolute minimum lighting required for, for the site. And so that's why this contract, again, in that lighting sheet that I don't have up, if you'd like, I can spend thirty seconds and pull that up. But it's bollard lighting that are just in a few locations, and then these handrail lightings that are very subtle in the railings themselves. And again, if, if you'd like me to look later, we can see how much a change order would be to reduce that. The contractor could, could give us, you know, a credit of, like I said, a thousand dollars or something to reduce the light. But for safety purposes, we strongly encourage that. It's, Councilmember Franch is absolutely right. You're absolutely right, Councilmember Markley. We don't have those types of lighting on our rails in other parks, but it's because they didn't exist really when we put those together. Those, those gangways would have them today if we were, well, we'd recommend that we have them today if we were to do that. Jerisich Dock is probably the one most needed that, but we have other lights around there that are very bright in the night that shine down on the dark, on the dock. And so it eliminates those bright lights that are from high up being shined down on the surface by having these very minimal LED lights in the rails.
We did go over this today, and so there's, there were going to be overhead lights plus this. And so now there aren't with Jeff's good input, and it is, the dock is lit on either side. So this would be a dark gangway with lights on either side if we don't light it at all.
Okay.
Liability. Councilmember Franch had.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Markley. I think the, the residents' neighborhood would appreciate your comments.
Councilmember Abersold.
Night kayaking is a thing. I used to take groups of people out and we, you know, like twenty people. I'll throw on the water at night, throwing glow sticks and stuff at each other. So it does happen and, you know, to have a good, good lighting source for safety purposes. My only question is, can people get into the, the paddlers or the kayak storage center at night? Or if they wanted to like get up at four in the morning and go catch the sunrise out in front of the harbor? Are they going to have access to that at that, those hours?
Couple of things. First of all, technically, park hours are dusk to dawn, closed dusk to dawn. But the Jerkovich family has an easement across there, which is not limited by hours. So I don't want to be able to put a gangway on there that is not lit for the Jerkovich family and their users to be able to go up and down that gangway, which this gangway as part of this contract is twice as long as their current gangway. So there'd be a hu, a large expanse of unlit area that could be, again, safety issue if it's not lit. But as far as the hours of the building, no, we're going to be, well, we have to put together those final terms, but we're going to be restricting that to be the same as the park hours.
So, so is there going to be some kind of gate to stop somebody from going down their past park hours? Because I mean, I'll be honest, I've been in parks after hours before, and so that happens too.
Yeah, but no, we're not proposing any gates. I mean, it's the same as maritime pier. There's no gate. People can walk down there. It's lit at, at any time. It's just you're not following the rules of park.
Thank you. Did we, I'm sorry, did we do a public comment on this?
Do we even have a motion and second?
We do, okay, great. Just trying to, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes six to one. Our last council bill tonight is a council bill, Eden Boat Brick House remodel chimney reconstruction change order. Thank you for staying here through all this, Jeff. We need to report as, from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langill.
Thank you, Mayor. I hate to be the person who comes in and continues to ask for more money, but what you have the agenda item you have for you tonight is requesting authorization to approve a Public Works contract change order to rebuild the chimney at Eden Boat Brick House for the community recreational hall. The intent of this change order is to be able to rebuild the chimney so that it meets current building codes. As you recall, this chimney was removed by Public Works in February of 2021, which presented to the DRB in March of 2021. At that point, DRB gave us direction to rebuild the chimney with as much as the original brick as we could sacra, or pull back together and to rebuild it to meet current building codes. In April, council took action to authorize a consultant services contract amendment with ISHKS and their structural engineer, HBL, to do the design and about structural evaluation, and then eventually do the design for the rebuilding of this chimney. I'm going to show you what this rebuild looks like. It's not the typical rebuild that people might see or think of when you're rebuilding a chimney, mostly because of construction standards, but also rehabilitating existing brick chimney. So this is a detail from the big package that was handed to the contractor to get a quote. I know it's kind of small. I can zoom in a little bit here. Where I want to focus on is this area, there's a few lines. Here's the roof. When we originally anticipated doing this work, we thought it was taken out of, the chimney was taken out of the roof line. We thought that, okay, we'll just rebuild the chimney from that point, from the roof line up. After the structural evaluation and in order to meet current building code, we found out not only do we have to go down to the second floor, we have to go, well, according to this, fourteen inches below the second floor ceiling, rip out the entire chimney, rebuild a new foundation with rebar, and then build up from there. So the $15,000 quote that we gave council back in April before we authorized the contract was not taking into account all of the structural requirement. And so we came back to the contractor after we had the building permit approved and said, okay, now here's what we, your change order is looking like. And the contractor said, okay, well, that's not going to cost $15,000 anymore. It's going to cost $33,000. So here we are tonight requesting, in order for this chimney to go back as required by DRB, the $33,000 to proceed. And we have worked with this contractor. They came back with a higher amount. Staff has negotiated this down to $33,000. It's the lowest we think we can get it. And so we're here tonight requesting that $33,000 change order. And that's my presentation.
Councilmember Abersold.
Yes, Mr. Legon, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the only reason we're even putting money into this chimney is for historical preservation for the building itself. We don't plan on using the chimney in any way. Not going to have fires in the chimney. It's just something there that's cosmetic.
Correct. In order to maintain the historic integrity of the building, we need to replace the chimney as it was originally with as many of the original bricks as possible. But you can see on, on this, it does have a metal cap with flashing over the chimney because it's not going to be used. It's not going to be connected to anything.
Thank you.
Is there any, I'm going to open up the public comment. Is there any, were there any written comments?
No written comments.
Okay, I don't see anyone here that wants to, is coming up to the podium. Are there any callers that wish to speak on this?
Don't see any raised hands.
Okay, we will close the public comment. Any clarifying questions from council? Okay, do I have a motion? Councilmember Denson.
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a change order to rebuild the chimney over the kitchen at the Brick House in an amount not to exceed $33,993.85.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Don't see any other deliberation. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Reposed? Stained? Motion passes seven zero. What? I know, I was, exactly. I was surprised. I was really surprised. He did. Motion passes. It's a, it's, yeah, anyway. Counsel reports, counsel comments, Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, comments, two comments. One, given our history on the paddler's dock, I would put the cleanup of the adjacent area behind that. Get the one out of the way, focus on what you, what you have to do. And then if we can ice the cake later on, that's fine. But on this one, we have, we've been all over the place on this thing, okay, in terms, and every time it's, well, we had this feature, we'll do this, we'll do that, and to me, it's just wrong to, to shift focus away from primary requirements. And right now, the clock is ticking against us. So, so much for that comment. On the $33,000 chimney, my only comment is, I thought historically authentic leaks were a viable alternative here. Let the water drip on them, and it's a bargain. Just do it. Okay, so much for that. Now, back to the real business. I'm Gig Harbor's representative on the Pierce County Regional Council. And PCRC has been reviewing the proposed revisions to the Pierce Countywide Planning Policies, which will drive, by the way, the upcoming municipal comprehensive plans. We've got to have a comprehensive plan update in, I believe, 2024 is when it hits. For the past three meetings, PCRC has been involved in a discussion of what's mandatory in the policy, or as I mentioned before, what shall be done and what suggested that is what should be done. The content of the proposed policy has drifted from the mandatory results to mandatory process steps. Sort of like, well, if you don't like that, try this. Instead of focusing on the, 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 the end goals, now there's language in there that says, shall do this, shall consider this, shall do that, which is just, it's over the top. By the way, this thing is 217 pages of policy right now. That's where we're at. The, probably the best example is in the climate change policy, which by the way, I'm supportive of the, of climate change actions, but this thing reads like the lawyers, no offense to those listening in. When an agency shall consider actions and adoption of regulations, it is intended to mean the agency will review actions and regulations appropriate to achieve the overall goal as well as necessity for said actions and regulations to be included or not in an agency's regulations and planning documents in order to achieve the overall goal. Nicely said. That, that means somebody gets to look over your shoulder and say, well, you didn't look at all the right alternatives like you were supposed to, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, it's, it's bad. Seems trivial, but these inclusions of mandatory guidelines, the way they're written right now is going to basically lead to a significant impact on Gig Harbor's planning workload, just to, just to feed this paper monster. And future misunderstandings in, in, are guaranteed. What's the intent of what you're after here? So what, what, what I'm proposing and what I'm following up on is that various members of the PCRC have voiced disapproval of this thing, so much to no avail up to this point. One municipality has gone out on the limb and gone on record, formally with a letter of the PCRC, disagreeing with this approach. I'd like to pursue a similar position for Gig Harbor, but I'd like to do it under the banner of the city of Gig Harbor, not just Bob Heim's member of the PCRC. I'm going to be following up on this in the next week. I'd like to, to discuss it briefly in the upcoming Plan and Building Committee meeting and be in a position to come back to council, hopefully for the, I guess it's September meeting now.
Or can you do it by the August ninth?
Probably not. Probably not. That's cutting it awfully close. And by the way, we do have some time. They have delayed, they keep delaying this thing. And now they're talking a November, December wrap-up of this whole policy discussion. So we got some time. But I, I think we really need to look at this and get our input on the table, okay? And by the way, this is a huge burden, the way it is laid out there for smaller cities like ourselves. In fact, the one that complained was Silicon, which was very small.
That's who it was.
That's who it was.
I think a lot of us would welcome that.
And, yeah, they, they just said, hey, we're in disagreement on this.
So, could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, because you, you've mentioned this before, about the should and the shall.
Yep.
Does, has it gotten worse?
It, 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 it morphed. It morphed from the shall being on hard deliverables to, because we made a lot of noise on that.
Right.
And then they shift the shall on to the process to get to those deliveries.
Oh, so, so it, it, they have progressed with the shall language.
Yeah, we're making progress, but I mean, the, I don't think anyone expected.
He's saying they, they've made progress on making not only the, before you get to the end result, to get there, they're pushing more regu, more power to say, you shall do this.
Yes, you shall, you shall follow this process, blah, blah, blah. You shall.
Yeah, no, I mean, but since the last time you mentioned it, it's getting, it's progressing.
It is progressing. It is progressing.
Thank you.
And, but they keep dreaming up alternatives faster than we can solve them, okay?
Well, thank you for your part on that. I think a lot of us would support you on that.
Okay, yeah, I just want to get the full force and authority of the city of Gig Harbor behind this thing, because I think it will have more of an impact on PCRC.
I think we need more information, and he, he's going to provide it to us.
Well, provide it a lot.
And we have a little time, yeah.
All 217.
No, that's okay. I know enough about that. Thank you for taking that on. I actually gave that to you. It wasn't a very good gift. Councilmember Abersold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say thanks and salute and hats off and pats on the back and atta boys and atta girls to all the staff who put in their efforts to make all of this thing happen tonight here back in council. It's great to be sitting here in this chair. Hats off to Josh and the tech team for putting all this stuff up, and I think it was pretty seamless. We only had like one little hiccup, and that's pretty darn good for jumping back in the boat and paddling out in the ocean like we have. So thank you for your hard work and your efforts. And thanks to all the people who showed up and came in tonight. It's good to see live faces. I hope we get to continue with this, although, well, that's all, so keep it positive.
Thank you. Councilmember Markley.
Yes, thank you. I echo all of those comments. And I also just wanted to recognize and thank Councilmember Heim for his hard work on the council because this, this, we need another representative to take over for you, Bob, when you have, when you exit the council. So whether that's me, whether that's somebody else, we need to keep tabs on that. And you've done really amazing work and amazing research. And I'm looking forward to the next Planning and Building Committee where you have some more information for us that we can solidify a plan for the city and bring it to the full council to see what we can do, to keep tabs on it. Because this could go awry in multiple ways very quickly from what I've heard from you so far. So we need to be vigilant in keeping up, keeping track. So thank you so much, Bob, for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. It is a lot of hours and hours and not very fun. Councilmember Denson, you want to report on the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor Kuhn. Okay, so we had a great meeting with Councilmember Rodenberg and Councilmember Markley and our wonderful lobbyists. They are working to identify different issues with other associations related to cities in terms of putting together our legislative agenda for the 2022 session. I know that Mayor Kuhn and Mr. Pisecki is, are thinking about that as well, and we'll discuss that at our next meeting. Our lobbyists did mention that for the state legislature, 2022 is a short session. They recommended that we do make a capital budget request. It's kind of our turn to get some funding. And so Mr. Langhale, the mayor, Mr. Pisecki are thinking about some, some options. The trick is that the money has to be able to be spent by June 30th of 2023. So a lot of the gray So a lot of the great ideas that we threw out, were not going to be done at that time. One of the ideas that kind of rose to the forefront initially was a scanty net shed, painting, re-roofing, and re-siding, which definitely needs to get done, but we're looking for other other ideas as well.
$30,000, you and I, Jim.
We also talked about our federal requests. We're still waiting to hear on those. If we're not successful, though, we can ask again. There should be another earmarking process, and we can analyze what did and did not get funded by other jurisdictions so that we can kind of hone in on what we might have a better chance on. They did say that it seems like social social service related projects are are attractive to the legislators. So some things that might, the fish facility might be something that we could collaborate on, senior center, community-based policing, mental health stuff. If we could think about things along that vein, it might be attractive. But again, we'll know more when when things actually get funded. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Franch.
Hey, Jeff, what is the, what is the threshold on public works projects that the city crews can do now?
I can double check that, but last I recall, it was $116,500 per RCW, less than, for two trade work.
Okay, well, that's something that maybe I'll put together. And I don't, I'm probably, I'm sure the rest of the council is aware of that, that limit that throttles us from being able to do some of these projects ourselves. I I would like to see us talk to our lobbyist and see if there's any other jurisdictions that have concerns with trying to get that that number raised. So we could do more projects, you know, and if it, if it took hiring more public work staff, it's a heck of a lot better than paying the consultant to go out and design it. And I mean, just like the concrete work at Veterans Park. You know, I mean, the, there's just a whole lot of things that our crews could do that would save us a lot of money. So maybe I'll put together a memo to the, to the committee. Who is the chair of that committee?
I am.
Okay.
That would, and I would welcome that. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Daniel, who's sitting there quietly. There you are. Thank you very much, Daniel, for for being there at, you know, if we need any clarification anytime. Thank you. Announcement of upcoming meetings. We have Boards and Commission Candidate Review Committee Special Meeting is Monday, August 2nd, 2021, at 2:00 PM. And we have the Planning, Planning and Building Committee meeting Monday, August 2nd as well, at 3:00 PM. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.